Good evening. I'd like to call the October 10, 2023 Planning Commission regular meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom, online or by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage, or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag of those feeds. And now I'd like to read the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as Gudani, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yeah, I will start with Chair Davies, who's on Zoom.
Present.
And Vice Chair Tagney?
Present.
Commissioner Strickland?
Present.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Yowdowitz?
Here.
And Commissioner Mayer?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Lehman is absent.
Thank you. And we are joined at the staff table this evening by Community Development Director David Loyah and Building Official Joe Bishop, as well as the City Engineer Naitra Khatri. Next, we have public comment. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of the agenda items, you will have an opportunity when that, when we are discussing those items. If you wish, if you have comments about items that are not listed on today's agenda, please line up at the lectern. In the interest of time, all commenters, if you could shorten your, your comments to three minutes, we'll roll through.
Good evening. In the last joint session that we had with City Council, unfortunately, there were some comments made that were simply not true. These came from our Chair Scott. Basically, he was trying, he was focusing on the Barrow District and giving the perception that this was a safe place to build. And also, he also implemented that our experts somehow approved of that, and they did not. We haven't had anybody that's come out and said that the Barrow District is an appropriate place to build seven-story buildings. So I wanted to point that out. And also, he would, there was no, there was a mention of the historical maps. But the reason why this is in the coastal zone is because it was the former wetland areas. And that's why the Coastal Commission is going to take a pretty good look at this. So to give that presentation that somehow this is okay, when it's not, is totally unacceptable. So I wish, if you don't have anything to say about it, which has basically been your comments from the start, that's, that's okay, if that's the way you want to go. But don't get out there with, with your own personal feelings when we haven't had any studies, we haven't had anything said from the Coastal Commission. And if you're interested, the Coastal Commission is down the street, so you could get information and that could actually help you in your planning. So I would strongly recommend that. The other comment that was made prior to this by also by Scott was that somehow if the people that are out there that are, that just want three to four stories, is somehow that's the definition of urban sprawl. That's totally ridiculous. If you don't know what urban sprawl is, you should look that up. But to make comments that three individuals that are, that are just, that want to see the best three to four stories, you know, we have Europe that's loved to death, that's a lot of cities that have, that are still there that survived two-war wars are in three to four store range. And, you know, somehow those are the most desirable places to live. So I would also recommend that maybe we, we look into studying our architecture a little bit, and what makes a livable city. And because of that, I'd also point out that Cal Poly, Ali especially, has some classes that are online that I highly recommend on sea level rise in this, this area in Humboldt County. We also, I think Lori Dellinger is, has online classes on the earthquake and all the, and studying of that and the plates and how that affects building. That's another one. And there is also online classes on architecture. So I highly recommend that you guys look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Good evening. I'm Fred Wise. I'd like to address what I regard as the continued myth that the gateway plan will, by increasing the quantity of houses, cause rental prices to drop. This is a notion that was promoted by the Community Development Director and by Commissioner Simmons. It, I find it a distasteful misunderstanding of how supply and demand works. I consider it to be the biggest deception that's gone on over the last two years. And it affects people, when you, you've seen people come here and they say, we want housing because we want to be able to afford to live in Arcata. I find it heartbreaking, truly. The, in the, Commissioner Simmons referred to an article in his notes for the joint study session. The article is from a reputed journal by a known author. And he says, if all things being equal, if the supply of a good or service increases, a price will decrease. But not all things are equal. We have a huge demand. We've talked about this. The demand for housing in Arcata, there's a variety of factors involved. When College Creek Dorm was built, there were 430 units, prices did not go down. When Foster Avenue apartments were built, 186 units, price code did not go down. Westwood Gardens, 102 units, the prices have gone up for the existing tenants. What I request is an approximate number from the Community Development Director of what quantity of apartments need to be built for, in his estimation, the prices of rents in Arcata will go down. It's my belief this is never going to happen, and we need to discuss this. Same time, there's another myth that's continued, that increased housing will decrease the level of houselessness. Houselessness is not based on the quantity of housing that is built, despite articles to the contrary. It's based on the vacancy rate. If you read the articles, you would read that. The vacancy rate in Arcata, I don't think is going to go down within our lifetimes. There's such a demand for people to live here. I've said this a year ago, in my belief, there need to be thousands of apartments built for there to be a drop in rent prices. Rent price is much more based upon the cost of construction than it is based upon the quantity of houses here. The, among the things that you need to consider in the next few months, land use issues. I submitted over 30 comments, not a single one was discussed by the commission, including a promise that there will be single-family housing in the gateway, in the general plan. There's not going to be any single-family housing, as we know. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fred. Seeing nobody else in the audience, do we have anybody online that would like to make public comment?
I don't see any raised hands online.
Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the commission and are enacted in one single motion. We only have one item on the consent calendar tonight, and that's the Planning Commission minutes for the regular meeting of September 12, 2023. If, well, personally, I would like to see one small change, so I'm not going to ask for a motion. It's, there's an item that came up at the end of the meeting. I asked if all commissioners were going to be at the next study session in October, knowing that two weren't, and I just was trying to stir that up so we all could plan ahead. And it's Simmons and Lehman that won't be at that study session, and it says that everybody will be there. Yeah.
Does that mean that you pulled that item to discuss?
Yeah.
Can I ask another question then, since you pulled it?
Yeah.
Part of that meeting was not broadcast on the Zoom, apparently. I'm, I'm wondering if we could get some information from staff or from anyone here about whether it was actually recorded and if that recording is available. Now, I, I didn't actually look before this meeting, but I did wonder.
Yeah, so just briefly to Vice Chair Tagney's point, I think everybody who was in attendance at the time said they would be here. I think that's what we reflected. And do I have that wrong?
Yeah, I think both Peter and I said we wouldn't be there.
Okay, okay. My, okay, yes. And I, so I'll, I'll make that correction, and I apologize for that. I, my notes must have been wrong. And then in terms of the recording, we did have a problem with the Zoom at the beginning because of a piece of equipment in the back, but that was corrected. And it was broadcast on Zoom, just not the beginning part of it. And the, the meeting was recorded and it's on our website. So if folks want to go back and watch that, they can. And if you recall, we did make a provision for folks who didn't get to speak at early oral communications to speak towards the end. We reopen that, that agenda item.
Okay. With those corrections, do we have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I'll move to accept this consent calendar with the modification mentioned.
I'll, I'll second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davies. Motion carries. We have no public hearings tonight, but some business items. So we will move on to our business items. And the first is to receive a presentation from the building official on building code and building materials. Joe Bishop, it's all you.
Hello, thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to share this. The topic of conversation is cross-laminated timber and mass timber buildings, which are not necessarily a new technology. I think the new element is the code significances. So I'll, I'll discuss that in a second. So what is cross-laminated timber? Building code definition was added. It is a prefabricated engineered wood product consisting of not less than three layers of solid sawn lumber or structural composite lumber where the adjacent lumber, adjacent layers are cross-oriented and bonded with structural adhesive to form a solid wood element. So you can see by the image there, they show one layer oriented in this direction, the second layer is oriented 90 degrees, the next layer back to the original. An analogy that I think everybody would probably be at least relatively familiar with would be plywood. This is essentially giant plywood. And plywood has its strength because each layer, they, they shave the layers off of a log, they lay the layers in one direction, next layer goes in the opposing direction. And if you've seen different types of plywood, you'll see that there's three ply, or five ply, or seven ply, nine ply. Same with these large panels. Instead of the layers being a sixteenth of an inch or an eighth of an inch, the layers are two-inch. So we'll go to the next slide. Oh, and I will say too that, that everybody is probably familiar with engineered lumber. I noticed as soon as I walked in, we have engineered lumber right here in this building, holding up the roof. So, and you'll see them in a lot of different places. I can think of the, right off the top of the head, the poolhouse, the Arcata Pool has big engineered glue lam, glue laminated lumber beams. There's several buildings up at Hsu that use them. The Tractor Supply has them. You see them all over. What's unique and what's different about cross-laminated timber is turning it into these panels. So they're used to make complete panelized wall sections, floor and roof ceiling assemblies, and structural shear panels. The image there shows a panel being craned in. They use computer numerically controlled CNC machines. After these panels have been glued together, they cut the window sections, door sections out, and they're all computer designed. So they show up on a truck and they're assembled on-site, similar to what you might see for a precast concrete tilt-up structure. And you'll, if you're at all following the Hsu, or the, excuse me, the Cal Poly project over at the old Craftsman's Mall, they're going to be assembling that building out of precast concrete tilt-up panels that are going to be arriving on trucks. They get craned into place. And those concrete panels are reinforced by steel. So concrete gives you your compression strength, steel gives you your tensile strength. So what cross-laminated timber is doing is providing, you can go to the next slide, it's providing the compression strength of concrete and the tensile strength of steel, but with a much lower carbon footprint. So carbon-intensive products are a very important issue right now for a lot of different reasons. I'd say, you know, what most people don't know about concrete is that in order to make concrete mix of aggregate, sand, and usually a Portland cement, the main ingredient, the active ingredient in Portland cement is the lime, the dehydrated lime. And the chemical reaction is the hydration of the lime. Well, to get that dehydrated lime, the, the raw materials are run through an incredibly intense furnace, 9, 9,000 or 90,000 degrees, you know, some very intensive, and it uses natural, primarily natural gas to produce the main ingredient in concrete. Similarly, with steel, you have a raw ore mined out of a mountain somewhere, and it takes a lot of energy to convert that to steel. Whereas timber grows in the forest, the entire time this tree is growing, it is capturing carbon. And when you take a product that is capturing carbon and you embody that into a building, that's what they call carbon capture. So that's the main benefit. Side benefit is essentially, you know, with any panelized building system, you are reducing construction time because the pieces show up on-site and they're assembled together. I, I suspect that we'll see it in that Craftsman's Mall site. That, once they get done with the foundation stuff and they're ready, those panels start showing up, it's going to be a building very fast and similar with cross-laminated timber panels. And they're lighter weight. So you, if you take the foundation that they designed to support their, what is it, eight stories? I think their biggest buildings, eight stories or nine stories, you know, they have to have a very significant foundation to support that. If it were built out of cross-laminated timber panels instead, you might have 30, 40% less weight, therefore, less foundation, again, less concrete and steel. So there's a report, this is a case study, the Platte 15 building, which essentially compared a building that was built using cross-laminated timber and what it would have, if it had been built similarly out of concrete or steel. And just to break it down, what you're seeing in each of these graphs, there's two columns. There's a cost and there's a GWP. And so in that report, they're talking about global warming potential. And the cost is essentially the same. Right now, mass timber buildings are not as mainstream as concrete and steel. So right now, demand is low, therefore, cost is high. So right now, it's, it would be similar cost to build a cross-laminated timber, mass timber building, as it would be steel or concrete. But what you see in the other bar is when you compare mass timber to steel, you're seeing 350% global warming potential versus 100% global warming potential. And concrete is even higher, they're up at 400%. If anybody's interested in that study, please let me know. I'll share it with you. We can go to the next slide. So this is really what's new. The, the main significance is the, this latest code cycle, which for us is the 2022 California Building Code, which is based off the 2021 International Building Code, and took effect at the beginning of this year. So we're talking really, you know, nine, 10 months. And this is the first code cycle in a really long time that has added new construction types. So when you get into chapter four, chapter five, we're talking heights and areas and building construction types, it's talking about how you're allowed to build a building. So architecturally, you want to design a 12-story building. Before this code cycle, you would have been limited to steel and/or concrete. Now, the building code has new construction types that allow, in this chart here, what, I know the, the word, letters are small, but on the far left, it allows up to 18 stories. That's type 4A. Type 4B allows 12 stories, type 4C allows nine stories. Each of them also has a maximum building height. And what the last column there, type 4HT, that's the existing type 4 construction that has been in code for a long time. And the HT stands for heavy timber. If you've ever been to any of these mill buildings, the old, the old sawmill buildings are what are, we would consider to be a classic heavy timber building. It just means that instead of two-by-four stick-built construction, you're using large pieces of wood. And up till previous, the 2015 IBC, at a maximum height of 85 feet, you could only build six stories. If you compare type 4 heavy timber to type 4C, you'll see that the height is the same, but now they're allowing up to nine stories in that same height. The difference when you go from C to B to A is just the interior and structural requirements for fire rating. So as you go up, or, you know, up in stories, so you're getting a higher fire rating requirement. So in a type 4A building, there are very specific requirements for how the joints are protected, how the shafts are protected, and how structural load-bearing walls are protected. So that's the new significance in the building code. Again, if you have detailed questions, we'll get to that at the end. So this is a little video, you can go ahead and click on that there. So the University of San Diego, in conjunction with, I believe it was Simpson Strong Thai and, and a couple other, they did the first tallest full-scale mass timber building. And right about here, you'll see it start moving. They simulated a type 4 earthquake. Right up at the top. And they also simulated the Loma Prieta earthquake. That's not what this video is, but they also simulated that. And then they have, of course, engineers and scientists get in there and inspect all the, the connections and all the joints and everything, and determine that the only damage, and I'm using air quotes, damage is cosmetic. So this building would have not only survived and kept people safe in the building, but the building would be able to be used, continue to be used. So this is pretty significant. Thank you, you can go back. And that is, all of this research that's been going into these buildings has
There's one simple hearing hack, anyone can
Code allowing for these new construction types. So of course, the other question, fire rating. You know, you think wood, you're thinking, oh, that's a combustible material. There's been a lot of testing done, and it's shown that heavy timber, whether it's dimensional lumber or cross-laminated lumber, only the surface burns and chars. And they kind of, that last image to the right there is showing a gradient that essentially, once that outer layer is charred, it's providing its own fire protection. It, it won't continue to burn in. Now, I know you think, okay, you're, you're at a campground, you have a fire going, you throw a whole chunk of wood in there, it's going to burn eventually. And, and yes, of course, eventually it will burn. But all fire ratings are all talking about hours, one-hour rating, two-hour rating, three-hour rating. And if you go ahead and click on this video, the people in this video do a better job describing it than me. Hope we have audio. You know, the science behind this has proven that even though wood is considered a combustible material, it performs much better than steel or concrete. Yes. There you go, the CC on the right there. Let's see. I apologize, I didn't, so I can, we can probably post the link to this video or something and Yeah, that's not going to help much. So bottom line, what they're saying is that, you know, they consider steel and concrete to be non-combustible, and they consider wood to be combustible. But in testing, what they're, the results are showing is that the wood actually performs much better than either steel or concrete. Because what happens with steel, you heat it up, it starts to become malleable. It loses its shape. The steel deforms. So if your building is built out of steel and it gets to a certain temperature, that steel starts warping and deforming. And it's, has to be, additional layers have to be added to it. Drywall or intumescent paint has to be added to the steel to give it that fire rating. In concrete, similarly, you'd think, generally, you think concrete's pretty non-combustible, but it sustains very significant damage in high, high temperature. And it might survive the fire, but it's not necessarily repairable. It might have to be, the building might have to be demolished. We can, we can exit out of this. That's, that's the gist of the video. And like I said, we'll, we'll try to provide a link and you can watch it on your own. So next, we just have a few different images. I'll kind of describe what we're seeing here. So in most of these buildings, and this is true for a lot of buildings of any, whether it's stick-built wood frame, or light frame steel, or, they usually do a podium build. So this first floor you're going to see there, down at the bottom, that is concrete. Oftentimes, that'll be your parking garage, or maybe your commercial occupancies. And then above that, you're doing a wood frame, or in this case, heavy timber construction above. So above that podium, everything you're seeing is wood. Steel still has a place. You still have your connections, your tie, different types of strapping or bolting connections. So steel obviously is still going to play a role. And the foundation, whether it's a podium foundation or a standard foundation, you're still going to have concrete. It still has a role. But what you're seeing is large engineered wood products being put together in a panelized kind of system. And the construction's really fast. We can go to the next one. Nashville Warehouse, Brownfield Development, the first mass timber structure in Nashville. We'll go to the next one. This is Seattle, Capitol Hill neighborhood, residential, multifamily. Again, same type of idea. You're seeing big beams. Those columns are, are actually heavy timber as well. They just have them wrapped for construction to protect them. But it's all wood frame, and what we call moment framing. So typically, when you see large open windows, they call it moment framing. Wood lends itself very well to that because wood is flexible. And that's actually a benefit. When we saw that seismic test, that building swaying back and forth, that's actually a good thing. They talk a lot about that big Ferndale earthquake and why so many of those old Victorians survived. It's because they moved. They, they were allowed to move. And that's typically what they call moment framing. So during the moment of the seismic activity, you're, you're expected to be a certain amount of motion. And it's designed for that. And wood is going to be a lot more resilient to that than concrete or steel. This one's an interesting one. It's, it's actually a rendering, and it's a 25-story mass timber building. But I want to point out, I counted, I got up close and I counted, that's actually six layers of concrete. The first six layers there are essentially podium, concrete and steel. And then they put an 18-story wood frame building on top of that. So back to the building code, allowing 18 stories of heavy timber, mass timber building. So how they get to 25 is by using six layers of concrete. Now, I'm not expecting we're going to see any 25-story buildings here, but I just wanted to point that out. This is, I wish I knew how to pronounce that. But this is one of the earlier, what was it, 2019? This is one of the first really tall mass timber buildings. And it has since been surpassed, but it's a pretty iconic building. I, I really love that. If you're interested, definitely check that out. The inside is, they really highlighted the, the wood. So I think that's the end there. Oh, yeah, one more. Vancouver Brock Commons, that was the one that overtook. And they were now the biggest. Yeah, so question Uh, yeah, so, questions?
Thank you, Joe. Are there any commission questions for Joe Bishop? Please, Matt.
I have two. Do you know if the study you showed at the beginning was assuming, you know, like a concrete platform and then mass timber, or a pure mass timber building?
Yeah, so that is an actual case study, and it was a podium. So they have underground parking, and I believe two stories of podium build, and then this, I believe it was six stories of mass timber above that. And the case study was taking that same design, and if they had continued with concrete, or if they had transitioned to steel, what the global warming potential would have been for that.
Thanks. And then my second question is if there's any, I know they're sort of new, but if there's any sort of estimate of the lifespan of these buildings?
I, I haven't seen anything specifically, but I would expect that it would be just like any other building. It's all about maintenance. You know, we have 100-year-old buildings right here. If you maintain them, they'll last probably another 100 years. So I would expect that it would be similar. Obviously, waterproofing is going to be important in any structure, but especially in wood structures. So yeah, that's definitely a concern that I think, you know, shouldn't put it at a higher risk than any other building as far as longevity.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions, too. I, I know mass timber construction's being really heavily promoted in Scandinavia. They have a lot of wood. They have a lot of forests. And I'm wondering about the, the forest footprint impact of the types of mass timber buildings that you're talking about, and that would be likely to enter the California building codes. Have, have there been studies of that that you can point us to?
Not specifically related to mass timber, but I have seen similar stories about the Scandinavian forests. Most of the mass timber that is in use right now is being produced in Oregon, and there is, obviously, unfortunately, there is some heavy clearcutting that is happening, which is clearly less sustainable than a managed forest. But there are, I don't remember if it was Pennsylvania or Connecticut, but on the East Coast, there is a firm that has been producing clapboards out of eastern white pine for hundreds of years, and they're researching, expanding into a cross-laminated timber factory. And that's a sustained managed forest where they, they specifically harvest in a sustainable way, and they plant as they harvest, and the idea being there that, similar to, I think, what you might see in our forest here, where when a forest is managed, there is a certain amount of harvest potential that is sustainable.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up question to yours? Because it's my understanding that with the mass timber, you can also make that with smaller dimensional lumber. And so you're harvesting smaller trees in order to produce these than you would be otherwise for, you know, for heavy timber?
Correct, absolutely. And that's why the, the, ah, the name's on the tip of my tongue, but this, either Pennsylvania or Connecticut, that the company that makes these clapboards uses only six or eight-inch diameter trees. They don't harvest anything over that size. And they specifically allow the big trees to spend their entire life cycle producing seeds and naturally repopulating the forest. And you're actually coming in and you're thinning out the, the undergrowth, the smaller trees, when they get to six or eight inches diameter, and it allows the larger trees in the forest to actually be even healthier than a clear-cut, plant a million trees of all the same size, and they all, you know, it's a much more natural process. So yes.
Okay, a second question, yeah. I, I know the Forest Stewardship Council has had huge controversies over certifying mass timber construction over several of those issues. The other question is the, the types of mass timber panels that are likely to appear in California's building codes. What kind of chemical treatments are involved with those products? I know, I know that there are quite a few fire safety issues that have said, yeah, douse them in more chemicals, and quite a few health issues that have said, douse them in less. So I'm just wondering what your experience with that has been?
Not much, but I think there are two separate questions actually in there. One is if you're talking about a treatment for fire rating, a chemical that, you know, is fire-rated wood or fire-treated wood, they apply certain chemicals to them. And then there's the glue itself that is laminated together. I believe that in most cases, the cross-laminated timber uses essentially a polyurethane, a two-part polyurethane type of glue, similar to what you would see in a spray foam. And California does have more strict requirements than that, and actually, I think, three years ago, they changed the formulation for what they're using in spray foam now, so that the part A is much more environmentally friendly, whereas the original polyurethane spray foam insulation might have had a six-month to one-year off-gassing period. The new mixes are more like a six-week off-gassing period. So typically, by the time construction is done, there's no more off-gassing of the, the polyurethane part A, the, the one that activates the resin. I believe that they're using a similar glue for the cross-laminated timber, and if they're producing them to be sold in California, they would have to meet those same regulations. And, and there's, of course, probably other potential glues. I'm sure there's some kind of epoxy resins or other resins, but as far as I know, it's all two-part polyurethane.
Any other questions? Comments, anything? No? Chair Davies, are you out there? Do you have any questions?
No questions. I appreciate the discussion.
My brief question is about when mass timber was pointed out like as columns in the center of these structures, are those also a glued-up scenario with a bunch of small pieces?
Yes, and that would be more equivalent to what we would see like a glue lamb. So not cross-laminated, but still a engineered product, yes. So they are typically, from all, everything I've seen is gonna use glue-laminated timbers for the support elements, and then cross-laminated timbers for the shear and/or panel elements, and floor elements.
And I imagine that different woods have different strength qualities and engineering that goes behind them. Is, where's Douglas fir fit into this? And I'm just asking because of the West.
Yeah, so the, the ones that are being produced in Oregon are primarily Doug fir. They, spruce, hemlock, and fir are kind of all similar as far as the building code is concerned for structural rating. So you might theoretically have a mix of spruce or hemlock or fir, but in, in the, panels that they're creating, they typically have different grades, similar to how you would get plywood. So if the panel is being built with the intent of having a finished or exposed surface, then likely the exposed surface would be the highest quality and probably one consistent lumber type. Whereas the core might be a cheaper, less cosmetically appealing variety. On the East Coast, I believe they're using the, the white pine, like I mentioned.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, that was a great presentation. We don't have any examples in Humboldt County yet, right?
Cross-laminated timber, no. I have not yet seen that in Humboldt County.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Joe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we'll move on to public comment on this item. So if anybody has any comments, please step up.
Very good. I am deeply in favor of innovation, any, support anything that will decrease or reduce housing costs. The, I made some notes. I do have the first article on arcata1.com of a four-story building in Los Angeles. And the, there are, is a hybrid technique where they use standard wood framing for the building and use CLT for the panels. The, in Los Angeles, the, had a building cost reduction of about 25%. I'll point out a few things, but I don't, don't interpret this as me being negative. What we're talking really is about prefab construction, and the benefits would be similar for any kind of prefab construction. I have an article about a building I'm fond of in Berkeley that uses modular construction. Anytime that things can be done off-site, it reduces the cost, basically. The, the cost of the shell of a building is really only about one-fifth of the cost of the building. So if there's a cost savings in the, what we call the shell, if even 10 or 20%, that's really only a 2 or 4% cost in the overall cost. The big issue with mass timber now, as Joe said, is transportation, this cost of transportation. In that 25-story building in Milwaukee, the panels were actually made in Austria, shipped to New Jersey on ship by rail to Chicago, and then to Milwaukee by truck. As Joe pointed out, there's laminated beams all over the place. It's been around since about 1900. To this point, externally exposed mass timber does not do well in a sea-air climate. I'm sure that will improve. I'm gonna be concentrating on Arcata One, not with the taller buildings, but with things that we might see in Arcata, three, four, five, six-story buildings. The, the, in terms of the carbon footprint, there's no doubt that they're an improvement. But I'll make the point, the Scotia biomass plant contributes as much climate-forming gases as about 60,000 cars per year. In a building, it's a one-time occurrence, and then the carbon's sequestered. The, so again, I'm gonna keep promoting prefab construction, which includes mass timber, but also the prefab methods. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just real quick. My name's Joanne McGarry, and I came here late because I was at the Fire District meeting because I had a few things I wanted to speak about at the public comment period there. And I said I was hoping to come over here following that to learn about mass timber, and I just was curious if the Fire District had any opinions on it, which was one of the things I commented on at the public comment. So again, I would think it's really important to highlight a lot of future thinking, design, and structure, taking into mind the other agencies and all that will be involved in this, and what they have to say about its application for our Gateway Plan and other matters. So just wanted to let you know that I'm, I'm making the rounds.
Thank you, Joanne. Seeing nobody else in the audience, do we have anybody online?
I'm not seeing any online.
Okay, thank you. And if the commission has interest in other presentations on building types, structures, how are we gonna see taller buildings, or, you know, fire protection, whatever, are you open to being part of some of that?
Absolutely. I would be happy to present on any topic, especially stuff that I don't know about, because then it gives me opportunity to learn more. So yes, anything, anytime.
Great, thank you, Joe. All right, now we're gonna move on to our second business item of the evening, which is to consider a recommendation of the City Council on the general plan updates. There's four areas that have been outlined: community, community benefits program, inclusionary zoning, commercial mixed use, and a cleanup of the resource conservation from ES staff. The city, well, staff will help us get through this, but it's really open to us to see how far we want to go on any of these topics and see what we can do. This is kind of a house-cleaning effort, right? Thank you. David, if you can take it from there?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair. So these topics primarily came out of the study session that you had with the City Council. In particular, there was some discussion around community benefits and maybe making some changes to the way that the program works. You may recall from our discussions early on that we had intended from the beginning to, to make those modifications, and that we had provided a draft that really hasn't changed since it first came out. So it's, it's timely that we do that. In the inclusionary zoning conversation, we ultimately came to a discussion where, you know, there was some desire to explore the addition of above moderate, or I'm sorry, moderate income to inclusionary zoning. So I've got some discussion on that. And then we had some follow-up from our last meeting on commercial mixed-use designations, where you all had made a recommendation to change some of the leftover commercial general designations to transfer those over to the commercial use designation. And we informed you at the time that there were some cleanup to do as a result of that. So I've got that prepared for you. And then the, the last piece is some additional cleanup items that came from Environmental Services, specifically to the resource conservation element. These were topics that they had been, you know, discussing with the Chair of the Creeks and Wetlands Committee, and also internally to try and, primarily what these recommendations are about are to take some of the, the detail that is replicated in both the code and the general plan out of the general plan and just leave it in the code. And so that's primarily what that's about. So I did ask you to do a little bit of homework and think through the community benefits program, in particular with regard to, you know, your top recommendations. We've been working on the community benefits program for almost the entire time that we've been working on, you know, these, these updates in the Gateway Area Plan for the last, you know, four or five years, having conversations with, you know, committees, the public, commission, about the types of benefits that the city would like to see in these, these developments. And just for context and to refresh your memory, the idea here is that projects that would come forward that met the housing density requirements in the Gateway Area to start, and this, this is a template that could be used in other infill opportunity zones, but to start just in the Gateway Area. If they met those density thresholds, they provided the design that's called for in the Gateway Code, and then offered benefits that are designated by the city of Arcata, that that would be the pathway for ministerial approval or principally permitted approval for these projects. So the community benefits program is a key component to it. And through that process, through that public process, we've been narrowing the number of categories. We started with a, you know, wide variety of different kinds of, you know, types of community benefits, and through that public process, we winnowed them down. In our presentation today, I want to make some recommendations for further winnowing for you to consider, collapsing a couple of the different types of community benefits. And then I also want to talk a little bit about how we could restructure, you know, based on your understanding of the priorities, this process that we have here. So let me just go over this process briefly. The way it was proposed originally is that you would require a total number of points depending on the tier that you're in. And recall, this is, tier one relates to generally, and it depends on the, the Gateway District you're in, but generally, tier one translates into a four-story building, tier two, five, tier three a six, and tier four a seven-story in your current recommendation. And so total points that are required increases with increasing building height. We also had discussions around making sure that, you know, the developments didn't just choose, you know, out of all one category, or choose only, you know, the, the least expensive to provide. And we wanted them to, you know, mix it up and provide a range of different benefits. And so within each of these tiers, there was a minimum of a certain number of different categories. You recall that the categories are broken down by, you know, their, their subject matter, either housing, or alternative transportation, energy efficiency, et cetera. And so then, the, the last component to this is that a project had to select community benefits, you know, awarded in the following tables, and that's where all the detail comes. This is complex. It also, there were several questions that were raised about why the point values were given to the various, you know, community benefits. And the, because of the complexity in this, two sort of variable- in this two sort of variable system, and the relationship between the community benefits and their point values translating into the priorities for the community, we end up with some really, you know, questionable outcomes if you run through the scenarios and try and figure out, like, how you would actually build a development. So as a restarting point, this was provided as a starting point, and due to some of those, you know, some of those concerns, as a restarting point, what I'd like to propose is a process where we go through and look at just the community benefits that remain on the list, and prioritizing those into three categories, basically, so that you have basically a top, middle, and a lower tier. And then we can look at a couple of different options. We may end up with something that looks similar to this at the end of this discussion, or we may end up with something that's totally different in terms of how you award those community benefits, but I'd like to walk you through those in a couple of different steps. So the first step is to look at the community benefits in general. Again, Mayor--
David--
Yep?
Quick question, sorry. When you said top, middle, and lower tier, were you contrasting that to the four tiers that you just had on the screen up above, or are you saying the point value would be of three different top, middle--
Yeah, the point value would be a total of three different categories, and there's a couple of ways, and we'll get into that in a moment. It's the, I have a table to explain how this process would work. So it's similar in that you still need to achieve a certain point value, but instead of trying to achieve 30 points, you're trying to achieve 6, for example. So you recall that the categories, you know, housing creation was category 1. We went through, I think there were a total of seven categories, and the seventh category has to do with site amenities, I'm sorry, eight categories. The seventh category had to do with site benefits, so Wi-Fi and internet access. You all had, you struggled with this when you had your conversation with the City Council members, they struggled with it, and essentially said, hey, look, the City Council said, let's delete category 7, retaining resident neighborhoods serving commercial use. And so what we have before you is deleting that, that was a specific direction of the City Council, and then we would pop this into probably category 8, economic development, rename that category 7.
So should we just try to go through these one at a time relatively quickly and say, like, this is my top priority, this is my medium priority, this is my lowest priority? Or that sort of thing?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, we can do that. I did want to walk through some of the changes that staff is proposing here, and the reason for doing that is in part because I know we received some public comment on that, and I think is a good starting place. If the Commission is amenable to, you know, the items that we've deleted for the reasons we've deleted them, that'll give us a good starting place to go into your priorities, if that's okay.
Sounds great. Move on.
Okay, so category 1, the, most of these were retained. Condominium conversion-ready is, we're recommending deleting because that really has little inherent value, number one, and number two, you know, we were only giving it one point anyway in this original system, didn't seem to have much value. Does anybody have heartburn about this, or have discussion they want to? Okay. Category 2, unit tenure mix, this was a desire to try and, you know, create a mix of different housing types, you know, both ownership and for rent in individual buildings. We have, you know, housing affordability incentives and owner-occupied market rate housing. We have affordable housing incentives already built into this, and so this just seemed to be a little bit of a fluff, unit tenure mix. Does anybody feel strongly that should be included?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I feel that that's something that we should definitely retain, particularly for larger projects. It does make a whole lot of sense for smaller projects, but for larger projects, and we would need to think about a threshold for that, I think it makes a lot of sense, especially if you want to ensure that there will be some place for owner-occupied units and nearby housing for renters. And I think that in larger projects, that's definitely something that a developer could accommodate, and so I feel that that should remain in there. It wasn't one of my, you know, top five, but if we had a top 10, it would be among them.
Any others on that one?
I like this one, but I would put it at a low priority, if that makes sense.
Okay.
And David, for clarification, it has nothing to do with affordable, affordability or anything, right? It's just rental and owner-occupied?
Correct. Yeah, it's just making sure there's a mix of rental and owner-occupied. The other reason why I dropped this was because, you know, the construction types between tenant spaces and owner spaces are really different, and I think that, you know, at least in the near term, you know, this is unlikely to be used. And so, you know, simplifying the number of types of things that we're giving community benefit credit for, this one just dropped off the list for me. But, you know, again, if I can put this in as sort of a yellow, and we can come back to it and see if this is worth adding back in, does that feel okay to everyone?
Yes.
Special needs housing, I think there was, you know, a lot of support for this, but the reality is that, you know, relative to the other community benefits in a simplified version, I think that you'll start to see that there are other benefits that you would rather see, that this wouldn't make the top list. That was just my guesstimate. Open to discussion.
This was actually my number-two priority on the entire list. I feel very strongly that the market will not provide sufficient housing for the particular special needs groups that you indicated there, and that a community benefit in providing for our special needs neighbors for us ourselves is a very important policy role that the city can and should play, and that should be rewarding developers for. So I feel pretty adamantly that that needs to stay in.
Okay, how's others?
How would we, like, moderate that, ensuring that these units are reserved for these classifications of people?
Yeah, this type of development would likely be linked with some other, you know, regulatory agreement or something to that effect. So for instance, the special needs populations are, you know, folks experiencing homelessness, that's more likely than not going to be a project that the city is assisting with in some kind of grant, and then we're adopting, you know, or agreeing, entering a regulatory agreement to ensure affordability for a period of time. Persons 55 years of age or older, generally speaking, you know, when you develop a, you know, that type of housing type, it's purpose-built, and it's designed and operated that way. We do have a couple of projects where we actually have regulatory agreements for low-income housing for seniors, and so that's another alternative. In terms of artists and/or students, you know, right now, I would say, you know, we already have a large proportion of our housing stock, you know, committed to students for sure. You know, artists, we, you know, certainly would like to, you know, see something developed for that, but we don't have anything currently, and I think that that would have to be a regulatory agreement if we wanted to ensure it stuck. And then the mobility impaired, again, I think we already have some incentives for increasing the number of, you know, convertible, or ADA, or otherwise designed for sensory-impaired individuals, and so I saw that as somewhat duplicative. So it would be, for those, it would be really the design, you know, once it's designed and built that way for mobility impaired or sensory impaired, which I would suggest we add to this list if we, you know, if we keep this one, that those would be based on design.
Yes. I like this one. I don't entirely understand why artists and students are included in this, like, list, and I think I would vote to keep it, but without those two categories.
Yeah, I think there was, in particular, in the Creamery District and, you know, other areas where there's already, you know, sort of an art community. The idea was to, you know, to create spaces that are specifically for artists. Most of the time, and there's already a template for this, actually, most of the times it's kind of combined with an affordable housing component. And so that was, you know, information that came out of the public engagement, and then in terms of students, you know, right now, a large component of our single-family housing stock, which is not purpose-built for students, is committed to housing students in the rental market, and the idea being that if there were purpose-built structures that were designed and affordable to students, that that's one way that we could, you know, from policy incentives, start to free up some of that single-family housing stock and convert it back over to family housing. So that's part of the reason why that's included in there.
I like keeping it in. My comment relates to the persons 55 or older. That seems a low bar in today's environment. Perhaps that should be higher?
Yeah, I like that. That's the one that I key in on also, and I just super look forward to there being some kind of elder housing in downtown Arcata that's super walkable. I think of, I've followed the process of Life Plan Humboldt, I think they're called, and that they ended up in McKinleyville and are trying to create a more walkable situation. I so wish that in the future, they might have Campus 2, or some other group, create that kind of housing in downtown that is specifically designed for an elder crowd, myself included. I'm looking, I'm planning ahead.
It's a huge thing for the AARP. They're huge advocates of, like, walkable density communities.
Yeah. Walk to the market, walk to the coffee shop, absolutely. So Judith, go ahead.
Yeah, just, this is one of those items that actually overlaps with some of the other potential benefits and design characteristics that we pretty much have all been enthusiastic about. The design issues involved in a universal design standard, for example, would suit a lot of this. This would allow for things like, you know, single-room occupancies, or a number of innovative tenure possibilities. So it would maybe overlap with some of our other categories, but the idea that there would be a positive reward to developers to identify the special needs that their developments would be able to serve and design around that, that seems really important to me, if we're trying to create livable, walkable, equitable communities.
So I'm going to make the recommendation that we adopt sort of a format like we had before, where we were kind of doing rapid-fire voting. I have four of you at the minimum that have said that you don't want to delete this one. I've moved that on, and I moved it into our second batch of, you know, discussion points, which isn't held in this table here. And so if it's all right with the Commission to sort of rapid-fire these, I'll try and give a brief recommendation as to why, you know, we deleted something, and if y'all can give maybe gradients of agreement as to, you know, where you're landing, like, no, let's not do that, or yes, let's do that, and if we need to, we can have a little bit more detailed conversation, we'll get through the, get through them in a little--
Yeah, are you going to know if Scott has, wants to chime in, or are we just going to hear his voice?
Scott's going to just jump in if he needs to. You okay with that, Scott? Scott has left the meeting. Yeah, he's been fighting this cold that's going around, so. Okay, so there's nothing in the arts and culture beautification that was recommended for deletion? If you see anything you'd like to delete, I'm assuming, since you already made this as a recommendation, there's nothing that you've had second thoughts on, but-- In terms of wetland and creek landscaping or maintenance, the, you know, recommendation to remove this, in part because it really has limited applications, there are so few of the parcels that are going to have an opportunity to do this, and I think that we can, you know, work with individual property owners through the, you know, the development and normal setbacks that are included in the code. Basically, if you are within, or if you have a wetland on your property, you're still subject to the resource conservation policies and the wetland protections that are in the land use code, so suggest removing this. These will get done already, basically. Everybody's nodding. Okay, so park fee, pay a park fee in addition to the park and loo fee. We see this 1.5% of the total project construction costs show up in multiple places. The park fee on these projects is already going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars per project, and so this is kind of like doubling down on, you know, on something that we're already getting money for from these projects, and so we're recommending removing it simply to, you know, streamline and recognize that you're already getting many of these benefits, including on most of the larger projects, you'll be getting, you know, dedication in easement for public access to recreational space.
Do you want us now to do gradients agreement? Are you just okay with nods, or we'll stop you if we want to?
If no one has heartburn about this, these deletions, we're going to move on to the next one. If you feel like you want to, you know, push back or have, you know, other ideas put forward, you know, make that known, and then we can do a quick gradients of agreement, or, you know, where other people are landing.
Sounds good.
Community garden, again, this is going to have very limited application. I know there was a desire to include urban gardening in our general plan. We've done that, you know, I think this is a, you know, great benefit to folks, so I guess I'll just put it out there. Are you, in an effort to streamline this process, do you want to keep community gardens or remove them?
I'm okay with it crossed out.
Okay. We already have a couple people that are wanting to do a community garden already as a community benefit, or as a public access place, so these two things could be combined. We're just not giving credit for it in the open space and recreation. Wetland banking, this is a little bit of wishful thinking. You know, I've been talking about a wetland bank in Humboldt County my entire career, my entire adult career. It hasn't happened yet, it's probably not going to happen anytime soon. I think we just take it off the table to make, to simplify the list, but if anybody wants to keep it on there, or if the majority want to keep it on there, we can do that. Stormwater management, we're already required to manage all of the stormwater on the site. I think this is, again, a little bit of fluff, so I suggest removing it. City Engineer's not here anymore, but could get more information on that if you like. Similarly, wastewater controls, you know, the building code is, with its low-flow requirements, is continually developing greater wastewater controls. You are already not allowed to, you know, connect, you know, things that shouldn't be plumbed into the wastewater system.
I'd like to keep that on there. It encourages technological innovation, which we're going to need, and it will allow us to push our existing wastewater treatment system a few more years until we figure out a better way to think about what we want to get rid of and what we want to use. And I think that the Gateway could actually reward innovators who want to design their developments to keep water out of the sewers. So I'd like to see that remain.
Do you know if City Engineer has outlined that this is possible, or something we can quantify?
Yeah, we have not discussed this in detail. I mean, you know, I think Commissioner Mayor brings up some really good points. Our wastewater treatment plant is going to be able to handle all the wastewater that comes out of all of our growth in the next 20 years in its current location, unless something really drastic happens with sea level rise. And so, you know, this technology isn't needed, per se, in the next 20 years, but it does kind of future-proof us. You know, I think we're going to see more dispersed technologies for wastewater in the future, and, you know, limiting-- And, you know, limiting discharge now is only gonna improve those systems in the future where you don't have one mega-plant that's, you know, you know, handling all the waste. So, you know, I don't feel strongly, I'm just looking for low-hanging fruit to try and reduce the numbers here. Can we get a quick show of hands to remove or keep?
Which hand is keep?
Left hand, keep. Right hand, remove. No, I'm joking. Show hands, show hands to keep. Okay, we're keeping it. Publicly accessible landscape features beyond the minimum gateway code requirements. I mean, it would be great to have more landscaping, but I just, I think we've already got pretty good requirements in the code, so it just seemed like, again, a little bit of fluff. Okay, sorry, as I paste that over, this is in green building. Okay, building materials from renewable sources. I think this is a really good, ambitious idea. I don't know how we quantify it, to be honest with you. And I think that, again, the building code is, you know, starting to drive us in that direction anyway. But again, I'm, you know, open to this.
Is there any pushback to keeping that one?
Okay, moving into transportation mobility. Bus facilities, these are gonna be designed based on our transportation needs, not based on where a developer wants to put a bus facility. So it, it doesn't make necessarily sense for someone to select this as an option for a community benefit. I guess would be my, my recommendation. We already have funding sources that would develop these, so, you know, I think it, it feels good, but it doesn't really get us much.
So, wait, I, I just, why doesn't it get us? I, I, maybe I zoned out and didn't hear exactly what you said, but I, I'm not understanding you.
Yeah, so if, if, you know, three buildings on K Street between Ninth and Tenth decide to put up bus facilities, that's, you know, obviously not something that's desirable or, you know, or, or, you know, what we would approve. If you said, no, look, let's expand this and make it a, you know, bus facilities in lieu fee, you know, I mean, I think that, you know, we could look at that. You could even expand it to, you know, alternative transportation in lieu fee, and maybe that's something to look at. But keeping it as bus facilities where a developer is paying to develop a bus facility when we may not have, you know, we may have all the bus facilities that we need for the current ridership, for example. Or the city may say, we want one bus stop on K and Ninth, and we don't want another one until, you know, you get to, you know, higher than Eleventh Street or something to that effect. So it just struck me as kind of a, you know, nice, but, but a little bit of fluff.
No, that all makes sense. I'm, I'm finally leaving it, especially with the other things we're about to get to in this category.
Okay. I think the Bus Pass program is a much stronger program, and we should, you know, be leaning into those. Bike lane and trail enhancements, I feel like, you know, again, this is a, you know, fund-based where they would just pay us 1.5%. You know, we have a really good track record of building trails, trails that are on, you know, project sites. Those would be covered under other, you know, incentives for, you know, contribution to publicly accessible private space. So I just, I don't know that this necessarily gets us there. And I think in lieu fees are, are gonna be great, but then that requires us to track and monitor and make sure that we're developing, so we don't have to give those in lieu fee back, in lieu fees back. So for a couple of different reasons, I, I suggest dropping this.
I, I, I guess I don't quite follow. Bike lane and trail enhancements are a big part of the gateway, and you're saying there's other funding channels, or?
Yeah, so we, we will have other funding channels. We'll also have, you know, project-based requirements for, you know, for publicly accessible private open space. A lot of the trails are actually planned for on, you know, old rail corridors or going through people's properties where, where, you know, it makes sense to make connection. And the city already has, you know, a really good track record of getting money for trails. We're building trails, you know, all over the place. So I would, I would offer that instead of giving that as a community benefit to a developer, let's have them put that money into one of these other community benefits that we've identified as higher priority.
I want to keep this one. I think having more money for especially bike lane improvements, 'cause we've talked about doing, you know, Class Four divided bike lanes, which will require, you know, new concrete and that sort of thing. I, I think having those funds would be valuable.
Okay.
I just have a question, sorry. Is it 1.5% of total project construction costs for the project they've built or for the proposed bike lane trail enhancements?
Project that they've built.
Okay.
Good question. Good clarification.
Judith?
Yeah, um, this is one of the areas that, that came into a question I was raising about things that perhaps we should really be doing in our updated general plan citywide, especially for large projects or for the opportunity areas that the general plan identifies, rather than as community benefits in the gateway program. The bike park, safe, secure bike parking and storage, I think, is one of those. I think any large project, any mixed-use project in an opportunity area around town should require that. And therefore, it shouldn't be specific to the gateway if that's something that we'd like to propose citywide. And because we're doing this gateway evaluation before we're doing it citywide, this is where it's shown up for us. But I don't think that we should have a community benefit in the gateway that will be generally required in the rest of the city if we're thinking straight. So I'm wondering when we can propose those types of things. I'm not, I, I'm not saying it's not a community benefit. I'm saying it's such a benefit that we shouldn't limit it to the gateway and we shouldn't reward it in the gateway community benefits plan specifically. Is there a time when we can discuss those things?
Yeah, I think those are all really good points. I think we've done a lot of really cool things in the gateway area that we're gonna want to see in other areas. And I would encourage us to, you know, complete this work. And then as we move on to other infill opportunity zones where you can actually have developments of the size that would trigger these benefits, you know, that we start to, to expand those to those other areas and/or, you know, as we, you know, as we come to, you know, completion on the, the, the general plan updates in general, to, you know, take a, a second look back and say, you know, hey, all these cool concepts in the gateway area plan, you know, let's now consider these elsewhere. But I would say for now, let's, you know, let's, let's get through the pilot project. Let's get through the gateway area plan and, you know, and finish that work.
I, I guess, I guess what I'm wondering about is if this is something that we are actually gonna be moving into the general plan and into land use code. Why not keep a running list of those things now and indicate that this is something that we want to reward citywide or in all of the opportunity areas? Because if we, if we put it into community benefits for the gateway, we're, we're actually gonna be reducing the possibility that developers will opt for other things that we want when in fact this is something that we can require on a broader basis.
I think it's really good to keep a running list of things that you want to require and things that you want to move into the general plan. I would encourage us to stay focused on the task at hand that we have here just to get through this material. It's, it's developing the things that we value. And you may say, you know, for instance, I guess, you know, you could say, look, we're gonna take bus facilities off of the gateway plan, community benefits list, but I still want to consider that as a citywide, you know, requirement in our transportation element. So, you know, just to keep us focused on this conversation, I would say, let's, let's try and get through this material now. Certainly keep your running list, and then we'll have a concentrated period of time when we can talk about, you know, are there things that we want to expand and make citywide? Or are some of these things, you know, good ideas for only the infill opportunity zones, et cetera?
Okay, I'd like to schedule that concentrated time for sure and not let it fall off our agenda for the general plan.
Sounds good.
Yeah, sounds great. So it sounds like the bulk of the commission would like to see this stay. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, so show of hands, who wants to see this one stay and not be deleted? The bike and trail enhancements? Okay. So I don't lose track of these. Okay, electric bus, you know, again, this is another one. I kind of nixed all of the in lieu fee, you know, community benefits, kind of for the same reason. So does anyone want to see this stay? We also have, coming up, a, a transportation plan that looks at electrifying our entire fleet. So this is, this is coming one way or the other, and all the jurisdictions are looking at it. You know, it'd be nice to get 1.5% of project cost to be contributed to this. Chances are good our fleet will be electrified before this comes, you know, a project takes advantage of this anyway. Culturally or regionally significant design features, you know, again, I took this off. This is, we haven't had feedback from the Wiat on this, but this is primarily around the idea of creating, you know, homage to Wiat heritage, which is a little bit fraught. Not saying it's a bad idea, but I'm saying that you have to be really delicate in the way that you approach this. I can't remember how this idea floated to the top, but I would suggest, you know, until we've done a lot of really, you know, detailed work with the Wiat, that this shouldn't be something that we just willy-nilly throw around as a community benefit, that the, you know, white developers get to decide when they implement it.
Yeah, and we also have another benefit for like a native cultural space that I think specifically says it will be done by a local Wiat tribe, and that feels like a better way to capture this idea.
Living rooftop and open space, really cool idea. Again, I took this off because it's really a site amenity that's not accessible to the Good point. Architectural style, project incorporates three or more features identified in the architectural style guide, which I, I guess, you know, the, the idea behind this, I think, was to ensure that buildings are interesting-looking, but...
I'd really like to keep that. That's, that's one of the types of policy measures that have actually been really successful in form-based codes, where they have been implemented. And they can make a big difference in terms of the livability and, and aesthetics of an area. They will reward developers who actually don't totally skimp in that respect. And it doesn't necessarily have to give a huge amount of credit for those things, but I think that, you know, having embarked on what we're calling a form-based code, this is the form in the form-based code, and I think we should keep it.
Okay. May I ask for clarification on who would be the judge as to whether or not it satisfied three or more features identified in the architectural style guide? For example, if they said, oh, if we just put corbels up, we, we can actually check that box, because we already have two of the identified. And it might be just a, you know, $5,000 feature or something, but it allows them to check the box. And if, you know, there has to be some kind of quantifying of whether or not they really got the three different architectural styles.
Yeah, no.
Who would judge that, is my question.
Yeah, we, we would not be applying any subjective decision-making to this at all. We wouldn't say, oh, that's only gonna cost you $5,000, so, you know, we're not gonna accept it. If it's on the list of architectural styles, those features, and they select three of them, then they get the, the credit for that.
That sounds problematic.
I agree, it sounds problematic, but also if you think about, like, if we are going to want a developer to choose something worth two points, whether I'd want them to choose architectural style or an electric bike share, I think it's really important we narrow these down, and I just, that one just seems like there wouldn't be enough oversight and, and even wondering how much they, it costs them, like Dan was saying, whether that was actually a community benefit. Sure, aesthetics are important and sense of place and community, but that just doesn't seem like it would directly benefit the community.
I'm with Judith on this one. I think there is benefit to the, the aesthetics and, and architecture, and it's not very many points. There may be some difficulty in, you know, quantifying it, but I'm not sure that's the issue. I think the issue is the value of aesthetics, which is subjective in any event.
So we're already requiring two, right? Just in the code. And I, I feel like we had a conversation about, like, not requiring buildings to have too many features because they start to look like a sort of jumbled mess. And so I, I don't think we need to, like, make it a community benefit to go above what's already required in the code.
And I, to further this slightly, in, in the art contribution, we had a discussion that was like, well, what if they, I think the extreme example was just one white tile and a black wall and say, no, no, the whole wall is an art piece. Who's to judge? Is that a community benefit, or is it just a silly, like, yeah, okay, you could call that art? If nobody's, the city isn't gonna step up and have to scrutinize, or, I don't, actually, if we have an arts council or something, and maybe they could judge, like, no, that's not a community benefit. But this architectural thing seems like it could be a really difficult discussion. I super agree with that we want every encouragement towards creative and exciting architecture. I'd rather see it through the community benefits program locked in for everybody to have to follow than for us to have to play this game of, you know, did they really get to check that box? Go ahead.
It, it does refer in this item to the architectural style guide. Those architectural style guides have, in places where form-based codes have been implemented, have actually been the hearts of those form-based codes. And I think that we, we don't necessarily have to have a style guide figured out now, but it would, it would indicate that that's something we can do. It can be something more objective than traditional design review has been. But it does recognize the value of design in a form-based code, which is what form-based codes have been based on.
Can I make a suggestion that we come back to this? You all aren't, you're kind of split. I mean, there's more weighted towards, and if you had to push it to a vote, this would be gone, but maybe we go on. I think once you go through the entire exercise and you've looked at all of the things and then ranked them, it may be worth coming back and looking at some of these. Again, category seven is gone with the exception of neighborhood-serving commercial. I would offer that, you know, the point of a mixed-use neighborhood is to have some neighborhood-serving commercial, whether you want to give credit for that. I didn't take it off. I didn't think about it until just now, to be honest with you. But I would, I think I would recommend striking this one as well, not keeping that as a community benefit. It's a nice thing, but I think we're gonna get these things out of this development.
I have been feeling that way, too, that those commercial spaces will show up where they should show up by design rather than because they want to check a box. Judith, did you have something?
I, I guess I, I did agree with your leaving that one in, especially if it were slightly modified to indicate local populations serving... modified to indicate local populations serving commercial or service space, street-facing. And, and I kind of feel like if what you're trying to create is a walkable, vibrant, street life, serving people within, you know, walking distance, this is one of the ways that you do it, even if other policies would also yield that. Rewarding developers for saying, oh, yeah, okay, that's one of the things we're going to develop around, it is a reinforcement that I think we can easily do.
I'll, I'll say, I think, you know, we're not going to be requiring this in every building, it's just one way to get points. And so putting a little extra thumb on the scale towards building that commercial on the ground floor, because particularly, once you build a all-residential building, it's pretty hard to convert the ground floor to commercial, and so I, I think I would keep this in. I'll also just say, while I have the mic on, that I really want to see acoustical buffering as like a everywhere-required sort of thing. I already emailed David about this, but having lived in a bunch of multifamily buildings, I think that is the most important thing about livability for multifamily buildings.
Okay, you're, you've taken us to the next point. I think what I heard was majority of members want to retain resident neighborhoods serving commercial use. I did ask our building official about what building code currently recommends. He had the sense that the current building code, you know, provides that, you know. I think your current living situation, you're living in an older multifamily where you didn't benefit from these building codes, but right now, there's a, and I'm not going to be able to interpret this for you, but this is what he highlighted for me, that in sound transmission in multifamily buildings, that common interior walls, partitions, and floor-ceiling assemblies between adjacent dwelling units skipping down have to have a sound transmission class of not less than 50 or tested in accordance with ASTM E90. And that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but it goes on to say that interior noise levels shall not exceed 45 decibels in an inhabitable room. And so I think what this means is that there's sound transmission protections, but if you want to keep that as a body, I wanted to let you know, there are some building code requirements.
Yeah, and for this conversation, I'm fine with taking it out of the community benefits. I just, it's a, it's a pet issue for me, clearly.
Yeah. Yeah, and there, there is, you know, I'll say, in the work that we're doing with our noise element, and the, the studies that are going to support the EIR that we're doing, there are some recommendations for increasing the requirements, in particular for residential that establishes near known existing, you know, transmission or noise generation, especially like roads and things like that, so that we'll have standards for going above and beyond the building code, or ensuring that you're at, you know, interior thresholds that meet our noise element requirements, and then for new noise-generating activities, that they would have to create mitigations that, you know, protect off-site, you know, since we're having this mixed-use zone, if you have somebody who comes in and they're, they're going to generate noise, they have to protect the existing and future residents, that their noise levels are at the property level according to our, our noise element. Coworking in business incubators...
David, I don't know whether we're taking a vote on that one or not...
Oh, yeah, yeah, is anybody...
But I just wanted to say something before we...
Yep.
Commission weighs in. Sympathetic to Matt's plight, and noise is personally something I'm sensitive to as well. However, I think we would be inconsistent to leave it in, if that's, I think Matt was using...
I'm, I'm fine with taking it out. I had, David had asked for things that we think shouldn't be community benefits, but that should actually just be requirements, and this, to me, was one of those things.
Okay, then coworking in business incubators. Does anybody have any heartburn taking that up? Locally sourced materials, again, I'm not sure that, you know, we have a framework for validating whether or not folks have done this or not, and in particular with a 5%. Generally speaking, when, you know, buildings going up, they source the concrete from as close as they possibly can, you would probably get 5% of a building out of just the concrete. And so you're, you're basically giving, giving a community benefit for something that they're going to have to do based on the economics of the project. I think we have other things that we want to see instead. Okay, I'm going to skip over this part right here. This, there's a lot of information in here, and I think that we need to come back and take a second look at a lot of the alternative transportation measures. I was realizing the other day that we have a commitment to decoupling parking, for example, that isn't in the code anywhere, and I want to make sure that, you know, before we leave that, that, that we've got that as, you know, part of our code or part of our community benefits. But just to move on to the next exercise, that takes us through all of the categories that we had originally established. What I did was I built a table out of the categories that remained. I just, you saw me adding the categories that you reversed the deletion on. And so what I'm proposing here, I guess, is that we rank these, one, two, and three, and I can sort these lists, if you want to look at them in terms of, you know, what's ranked in terms of, you know, what category, or, you know, how are they ranked, one, two, and three? How are they ranked by category, and then rank, if you want to look at those. But I, I, I found myself thinking about community benefits in terms of, let's start small and then grow them if, if we find that we need to, and let's focus on the things that we truly want to see happen, let's say, over the course of the next five and 10 years, and rank them in ways that prioritize the, the highest, you know, the highest-ranked benefits. And, you know, I'll give a little lead into my thinking, and, and this is, you know, going to become more apparent when we start looking at the inclusionary zoning. I think we'll have sort of another cycle we go through when we think about this again. But I'm going to make, you know, sort of a pitch for, if you have something like a, you know, full market rate, you know, 100% affordable housing, or if you have something like the, you know, the benefit where you go above, you know, above the, the inclusionary zoning requirements, that is actually a pretty significant desire of the community. We've, we've heard this time and time again, and it's also a significant cost to the project. I would offer that if somebody's willing to do that in a project, that we say, that's it, you don't have to do anything else. And just let that, let that stew. And as we go through the inclusionary zoning, and I show you some of the economics of, of the inclusionary zoning, we'll come back to that. But what you see here is, you know, in these different categories, I've put what I think are going to be the highest ranked. These are based on all of the, you know, public engagement we've done to date, and this is also based on, you know, the, you know, the conversations that we've had with the planning commission. If I've gotten anything wrong, we can reorganize this. Excuse me. So the proposal here, and this is still in, this is still really in draft format. I'm, I'm not exactly sure how we structure this, but let me show you my, you know, sort of, the way I was trying to think about this. So these are, and I apologize for, you know, you can see, I didn't get all the way through. This isn't really presentation-ready, but it's something we can think about. Four, five, six, and seven are the stories, and then the Xs indicate, you know, the minimum tier that you have to get to for a community benefit. So if you're going to build a five-story building, you have to have, you know, at least three points, or at least three, the three category. And if you are building a six-story building, you have to have at least something in the two category, and one for seven. I realize this doesn't get us as many community benefits on any given project. The other system has each project providing a bunch of different community benefits, but if you sort of high-grade the community benefits structure, and you've got it whittled down to a very few number of just high-impact benefits, and then you say, look, you know, as a, you know, a four-story building, you know, we want you to provide some community benefit, but we're not, we're not setting a requirement here. It's possible that as we go through, you know, these, this exercise, we come up with some that we're going to bump off this list. We still want to see them, but we bumped them off the list, and maybe that's where the tier four comes in. You know, if you're building a five-story building, we want to see, you know, see one of these threes. They can provide something from, you know, two or one, but we want to see something three or higher, and so on and so forth, so that, oh, sorry, sheet three. So as you go up in elevation, you're, you're getting to those higher priority types of community benefits. This is a very simplified form.
Commissioner Mayor has a, there's a question here.
Hi, I'm really confused, because the, the ones on the other chart seem, seem to be among the, well, we, we haven't gone through our rankings yet.
Right.
But it, it, it seems like you flipped the valuation between these two charts. So I'm really confused.
Yeah, so instead of trying to get to a, a total number, and that's, it could be turned around and looked at that way, like a seven-story building would have to get, say, six points, and you can do that any way you want. You can take six number ones, you could take two number threes, there are other ways of looking at this, but what, what I was trying to do with this one is to prioritize the highest priority benefits, and I believe, you know, I could be wrong, but I believe I've captured, from what's on this list, what, you know, what I'm hoping, you know, we can refine, but what I'm, I'm thinking as a starting point are your highest priorities.
You asked us to do rankings ourself before this. I'd like to hear the commissioner's rankings.
Yeah, absolutely. That, that's definitely part of this. I'm just trying to explain to you what, what this structure looks like, and then you can go through and say, no, let's move this one up, let's move that one down, et cetera.
So I think one of the purposes of the original point structure was to sort of require things from multiple different categories, you know, a mixture of things. You're suggesting we sort of drop that format and stick to sort of one thing here gets you five stories, one thing here gets you six stories?
Yeah, I think, I think I'm, I'm proposing that as a starting place to simplify the structure, because what, what I started doing was to try and modify the structure that we had before, and it's just, it's really complex. I looked at a bunch of other community benefits programs, many of them are very simple. They pick like the three things they want to get done in their community, and they say you have to do one of these three things. And I think that, you know, when I was thinking about the, you know, the cost of providing these things, you know, to a project, you know, at some point, you're going, you're going to cross a threshold where the projects are just unaffordable. We want so many community benefits that they're just unaffordable, and we're just not going to get the housing. So what I'm, what I'm, I guess what I'm suggesting we do is kind of go through a reductionist exercise, and then build up and start to see, well, where, you know, where do we go? Because you could say, look, yeah, we're, we're, you know, take this, whoops, sorry. You could take this and flip it on its head and say, you know, instead, you know, like, go six, five, four, three, for example, and that's the total points that you need to get. So a four-story would need to get three points, and, you know, you can get that, you know, this, this, this is where I got stuck last time. You can get that by picking a three, which is the lowest priority, or by picking a three ones, the three ones are the highest priority. We would have to reverse these ranks, I think, to do it that way, so that, you know, a project that's trying to get to three would pick three of, you know, these lower priorities, or, you know, one of these higher priorities.
You, you could make the points simpler, right? Because one of the problems with the current thing is, you have like a nine, and a seven, and a four, and you get like weird math.
Yeah.
You could do three categories of things, some are worth one point, some are worth two points, some are worth three points, and then we just set the number of points per story at a number that we're all comfortable with. I, I feel like that is simpler than, you know, the current, like, I know that we're trying to capture, like, you know, the seven-point thing is 75% more valuable than the four-point thing, but it's becoming very messy when we do it that way.
And Matt, do you care if points come from different categories?
I, I think we should encourage it, particularly for seven and six-story buildings. I, the, the way, David, you had pitched it, you know, you would choose a thing from our rank one, as you had said, and that would be it. I personally was sort of excited about the sort of mix and match a little bit, and, yeah.
Yeah, so if we turned it around and made highest priority the highest point value, and then made it such that, you know, maybe this, you know, we'll, we'll have to look at this, maybe this isn't the right ranking, but these are the points that you have to achieve to get to these building heights. At four, you have to get a minimum of three, five, you have to get four, six, you'd have to get five, and seven, you'd have to get six. And then you could, you know, and then that's where maybe you come in with the layering of saying, you know, but to, to achieve six, you know, at a seven-story, you have to have at least one three value, or something like that, and then, you know, go reduce that down by each level, until with, you know, four, you could get this by either doing three ones, which is what probably most people would do.
Judith, yes?
In, in, in this, this scheme that you proposed before, the, the point of those categories wasn't simply a ranking value, but different types of values. Some were, some were designed, some were amount of housing provided, and, and I, I think that keeping that distribution is really important, and I, I think maybe that's what Matt was trying to get at as well. By, by simply comparing numeric values, you're in effect posing community benefits that compete with each other, and I think that undercuts the value of having a community benefits program at all. Putting, putting these positive values in competition with each other negates the original idea that your draft had of allowing the developers to choose from a menu of options, and not just building a lot of housing, but a lot of housing that has some other characteristics that we desire.
I think the majority of the characteristics are still here, and I think there's still, you know, options for the developers to, you know, select a menu. It's just a more simplified ranking system than we had before.
Might we agree that every project needs to choose, like, one from the highest priority category, you know, one of the top on this, it would be nine slots, like, you have to choose one of those, and then for your additional points, you can choose from other areas? I mean, maybe there's just some, we're not going to give in unless they hit one of those slots.
Yeah, I, I, I think one of the things we would want to encourage, if, if we're going to have these point values, is to convince developers to hit more than one of our highest value areas, and, and, and the point of this type of ranking would, would actually probably be to let the lower-value ones drop out. I mean, if we're prioritizing in this kind of a way, we, we, we would want to have it all if we could, right? But if that means you, you take one three and three ones, for example, you would then be avoiding getting our two threes, which is something that we would presumably actually want to do. So I, I don't, the, the, the previous system you had made sort of intuitive sense to me, and, and, and this sets up a, a, a system where we're giving up something, and not necessarily getting much in return for that simplicity.
I'm wondering if we should, I mean, we could, I feel like we're in, in the... I'm wondering if we should, I mean, we could, I feel like we're in, in the weeds a little bit, kind of going around and around about the same thing. Maybe we should work on the ranking, see where everybody's at with the general ranking, and maybe some daylight will come through that process. I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a good idea. And then we can, you know, again, revisit the, the point system. Probably the easiest way to go through this would be for y'all to, you know, kind of show of hands whether or not within these three categories. And now, in this current version, three is the highest priority. One is the lowest priority. So in this current iteration, you know, which of you, like, you know, do you all feel like this is three the highest priority? And then we'll try and go through, if there's, you know, vast majority of you that feel like, yes, those are the highest priorities, then we'll move on to the next. If there needs to be discussion because there's a split vote, then y'all can try and convince one another to sway one way or the other. And then we'll reassign any things that need to get reassigned here until we have a new list with new ranking. Does that sound good? Okay. So minimum of 1,500 square feet, I'm going to hide this column for a second, so we can see these. Minimum 1,500 square feet of onsite space designated and intended for occupancy by children's daycare or senior service center. Thought that came out high in, in your rankings before. Does three seem appropriate for everyone? Does anybody have heartburn?
It's, I don't think it warrants a three. I'd put that at a two or a one.
I also don't think it warrants a three, maybe a two.
Yeah, I'd, I'd go for the, the middle also.
Two.
Dan?
Yeah, two, sounds great.
Okay. Solar microgrid?
I question whether or not that, I mean, I, that's an engineering thing that I don't know about, or where the incentives, there's California laws about solar now. I don't know how that fits into any of that.
So I, I think I could answer, which is, it's not just solar panels, right? It's a grid. So if there was like a power outage or something, the place would stay online. You know, people could charge their phones and have power.
Yeah, and the concept here is that you would have like block-wide, minimum block-wide solar grids. So, you know, the, the project is basically coming in, you know, in a project like the AmeriGas parcel where you have one owner, one block, it wouldn't have the same kind of impact as it might for, you know, multiple owners on a block. But the project comes in and is basically building out a microgrid. And we've seen, there's some, some pilots of this where they, you know, they do the solar panel installation on all the buildings, do the battery backup and the interconnectivity, and then the, the, you know, the metering for all of that. So the idea is that when there are power outages, that block is still, you know, still lit up. Some of these projects actually come with a, a electric car share too, which has been, you know, cool and then advent on that.
If you don't live in that block, and we're looking for community benefits to people outside of the gateway or, or within, how does that?
Yeah, on a block-by-block level, in the initial phases of this, it wouldn't have an impact on, on neighboring blocks. But as you start to build out the microgrid and start to intertie those, you would, you know, it's, it's basically, it's a way to, you know, incentivize the market to build a, a microgrid. This may be a little pie in the sky. Maybe this should have been deleted, to be honest with you. But, yeah, where do you rank it?
It's not on my list of priorities at all. And I think as, as PG&E pricing rules change over time, you could do this and then feel like a complete idiot, as many people who have installed solar panels over the past few years have with the change in the pricing structure that is out of our immediately, immediate control. It is, it is, I think, a gateway-wide, interesting aspiration. The idea that there might be a, a microgrid for the gateway area, and that that would be a community benefit somewhere would be good, but a block-by-block microgrid doesn't make a whole sense, a whole lot of sense.
Sounds like our point value is going down.
Yeah, I, I, I love solar, but I, I could see reducing the point value.
Yeah, just a, the grid is not, it's more than just solar, but I, I do see what people are saying. If it was over like a hospital or something, I could make a good argument for a community benefit, but maybe not for just regular apartment buildings.
So do you all want to reduce the point value, or just delete this entirely?
I say delete, yeah.
Delete.
That's actually one of those things I'd love to see the city of Arcata develop some thinking about citywide. I don't know if the energy mavens around here are already way ahead of us on, on this. But that's something I'd love to see addressed in a general plan policy.
Yeah, when the power goes out here, the diesel generator for the city hall building is quite the spectacle in some ways.
Okay, so 100% affordable units, high value. Inclusionary zone, inclusionary units are for sale owner-occupied. So this is basically doubling down on the inclusionary zoning requirement for, for the, yeah, adding to the inclusionary zoning requirement. So it'd be moderate income owner-occupied inclusionary zoning units. Projects is a Wiat tribe project?
Excuse me, on, on that inclusionary units for sale owner-occupied, the way that's stated, I don't see that as the highest benefit level. Or, or how?
So you, I saw, I think, at least four thumbs. Where are you feeling? Is three appropriate, or just a show of hands? Or do you want to lower it?
I'm fine with three, but panel here? Matt's looking it up.
So there were, there were a couple of different, this is the, inclusionary units are for sale, because you changed the wording slightly from the original way it was put. And I'm trying to make sure I, we're talking about the right one. Yeah. Yeah, that one's a high priority for me.
And would, would the city then administer and enforce that post-development? How, how, how would that be tied in?
Yeah, these would be, so with the inclusionary zoning requirement, that's a regulatory agreement. Currently, the way that the inclusionary zoning is being developed, the owner-occupied component is for moderate income. It doesn't make sense to develop a, you know, very low-income ownership program. So, yeah, I, I did paraphrase a little bit in here, but this is basically the inclusionary units, units that are, the inclusionary units, if they're for-sale units, are, you know, for-sale owner-occupied.
So I, I guess there are other models of this sort of thing, like a community land trust, or a limited, limited equity housing co-op, that aren't exactly the same, but sort of provide this, the similar end goal. And I guess I would recommend including those in this category as well. They're, they're all sort of the, kind of the same thing, but work slightly differently.
I, I, I think if you were to, you know, frame it in terms of, you know, alternative tenures, or, or multiple tenure possibilities, or even the first-time homebuyer program equivalent, that might make more sense than keeping it that general.
Yeah, the first-time homebuyer, the, the way that folks actually purchase the units is different from the units being available for purchase. I mean, in terms of adding different, I think we could say, et cetera, here, this is very, you know, technical, but if you have a multi-unit building, and you have condos, and those condos are for sale, and some of those condos are for sale to, you know, moderate income folks, reserved for that, that's, there's, it's already kind of a land trust in a sense, in that you have a, you know, a, a building, you know, wide, like, nobody owns the actual land. You own a, you know, subdivided airspace component of, of the overall.
You own a share.
You own a share, yeah, exactly. So it's, it's sort of similar to already. Okay, so I guess the question is, with that in mind, is that something that you value as the highest priority? Okay. Project is proposed in partnership with the Wiat tribe. Is that a high priority?
Has the tribe spoken up about this at all?
Yeah, actually, the Wiat tribe has a, a housing authority called Dishkama that we've talked with on a number of occasions, and they're very interested. Regional annual bus pass, this was, you know, has been sort of a, you know, hallmark of the alternative transportation. So the residents, and that was expanded through your conversations to employees, that they provide annual bus passes for, you know, the full transit system.
That, that doesn't seem to be quite on the level of 100% affordable units. It, it's, it's, it's money. It's not neighborhood. It's not tenure.
Yeah. And when we get through the whole inclusionary zoning discussion, I mean, again, I'm going to come back and, and make further recommendations. I mean, regional annual bus passes is maybe actually on the order of, you know, cost to the project, that, you know, a, you know, the inclusionary zoning, standard inclusionary zoning requirement would be in terms of its market loss. 100% affordable units, in particular, if that is not subsidized through some sort of, you know, grants with the city. I mean, I just, I don't think we're going to see those kinds of projects, but I think that, you know, those ought to be in a, in a category of their own. I think that, you know, if you're going into, you know, higher levels of, of affordability, you know, and, and we might need to, you know, have this discussion and balance with the, the density bonus, because there are some incentives that are provided there. But there are orders and magnitudes different. I totally agree with you on that. But it's, it's not only the cost of the project, it's what do we want to see in our community?
Well, except for what you're doing here is you're linking this to a point system. And, and there's just no way that those two things are equivalent. So...
Would you suggest less points than, like a two?
A one, maybe. Especially since, you know, to some extent, it duplicates programs that we might have through other means.
Yeah, I, I would offer, and, you know, I don't have, this is, this is just a gestalt. I don't have any, you know, pro forma to, to prove this, but I would offer that if you make this a one, it will never happen. If you don't prioritize regional bus passes because it's an expensive program and it's ongoing expense, that if, if a developer is like, oh, I only get, you know, the least amount of credit for this program, they're just never going to do it.
Part of the problem I'm having in evaluating these is judging the monetary, you know, economic value or cost to a developer of these versus the societal, you know, community benefit. And I think, you know, we have kind of apples and oranges in some of them. And if, if I'm a developer, I would think I'd want to look at the cost of the benefit, so before I did anything in choosing which benefits might or might not be appropriate. So the question I have is, is there a way that we can kind of monetize each of these? You know, have an economist or some, you know, maybe it's too expensive to do that, but to actually get some idea, or have a developer come in here and, and talk about these. Because if no one's, you know, if a developer is not going to do any of the benefits, because by looking them, at them on their face, they're going to be cost prohibitive, I don't know why we're taking our time to even talk about them. But if there's a relatively, you know, easy way to try to figure out the cost of each of these, I think that would be helpful, to me at least.
Yeah, I think, you know, we had initially discussed having an economist look at these. I think at this point, the, you know, the council is, you know, more interested in seeing the program up and running, and then evaluating over time. I do think that these should be ranked based on what we think the community needs the most, regardless of the cost. And so if you have something that is going to cost developer a, a very small amount of money, and it's a high community benefit, you should give that high points. And then the way we can structure this so that we don't get, you know, you know, 300 of the lowest-cost thing and none of the other things, is that you put a limit on, on that number of things that you want to see happen. I think, you know, regional annual bus passes, if that happened in every single project in particular, because the parking requirements, you know, paired with the idea that the parking requirements are going to be lower for these buildings, and so we're building out through these projects the regional transportation network, then, you know, you know, then, then let's, let's incentivize that. In fact, I think to some extent, you know, we've, we've gone, you know, through a lot of trouble to develop, you know, a lot of different priorities. And it may be worthwhile, you know, you know, honing in on just a few. Like I said earlier, I've seen some of these other communities that have community benefits programs, and they literally have like three or five things. You pick one of those three or five things. And it's really simple. You know, if we want affordable housing, and we want regional transportation, and we want, you know, green building design, pick an energy one, pick a trans, alternative transportation one, and pick an affordable housing one, and say, these are the first, we're going to start off with this pilot program, these are only, you, you have to pick one of these three things. That would be the simplest program. But I think right now, you know, we've got a lot of good things on this list. I would say that you should rank these in priority of what you think is most important to the community. And we can worry in, in a latter step about how to limit, you know, basically folks lowballing us.
In, in the staff report, you asked us to rank our first five priorities. Some of us did that. It seems that that's not what we're hearing about right now.
What, what I wanted you to do was to think about what are your top five priorities to make sure that those are on the list, and that you have really gone through and, and, and done this work ahead of time to be able to rank these. I think that if each of you wants to sit down and talk about what your top five are, and to go through that, you know, we can certainly take the time to do that. I think we're, we're going to be more effective at going through and ranking the things that you've already kind, kind of said, these are the lists that we want to look at and rank. But I'll leave that to you all to decide.
This was in my top five. I could just say that. It's, this one was in my top five, because it's what you were just saying about, like, people aren't going to have as many places to park, giving them a free bus pass, like, we're trying to shift, you know, modes of transportation. It makes sense.
We're just about through with the, what's up there as the top point value items. Perhaps when we get to the last one, if your top items aren't within that top list, why don't we allow people to just start pushing the commission to see if they should get up there?
Okay. So this is, again, it's a, a fee-based program to establish and maintain for at least 30 years. Car share program, electric car share, or pay 1.5%. So this is one where I think I combine two things. And that fee collected must be used for electric car share program located within the gateway area.
I don't think that that should be something linked to building construction, especially since there are both private for-profit and not-profit, not-for-profit entities that are making those programs work. And I'm not sure that linking that to housing development is an appropriate match, especially since it also locks those developers into, in effect, providing locations for... providing locations for storing those cars. And it seems to me those things should be separated.
Anybody else on that one?
This was another top priority for me. I, so instead of like a big parking lot to store everyone's individual car, I think encouraging developers to run this kind of system and then advertise the units as when you rent here or you get owner-occupied housing here, you also get access to a car share program, I think makes a lot of sense as like a, again, like mode shift as a community benefit.
So in effect, would, would it just be a matter of providing a parking space for car share cars? Or would it actually be owning the cars and administering a car share program, which is a really different thing?
Be a project-based car share program.
I can't imagine any developer who would want to do that.
I'm with Judith on that one. It sounds cumbersome. And if there was in lieu of fees or just providing space for a car share on the premises and the plugs that charge the cars or whatever, that sounds more streamlined and reasonable.
So the Sorrel Place is already committed to doing this with the Affordable Housing Sustainable Community project that we did there. They haven't got their project up and running yet, but they'll have a project-based car share program associated with that project. And, you know, the developer can make it such that the, you know, car share program is cost neutral or they could actually make money on it. And so there's, you know, a, I think there is some incentive for folks choosing this. And to the extent that there are, you know, as Commissioner Simmons was saying, cars available, you know, in this, you know, interim before we have people movers that, you know, you know, people can get around on or, you know, you know, other modes of transportation. It helps smooth over and create a, you know, framework for our existing car-based transportation network so that, you know, folks don't have to own their own car.
I am strongly in support. This is one of my top benefits.
Show of hands, are we good with three on this?
It's not in my top.
Anything else to say?
I would just say, it seems like something that's beneficial for the person living in that specific building, which is great. But I feel, you know, on HSD's campus, I used to see these cars. They have some there all the time. And I'd be really curious to see how many people are actually interested in using the program. And then there's the question of, will the person who's living in this building have to pay to use the car? And then how much of a community benefit is it really at that point? Or, yeah, I guess that's my thought. I am supportive of keeping it, but maybe not as a three.
I think I'm somewhere less than a three on that, too.
I'll just make the pitch for how it's a community benefit. It's fewer cars on the road, fewer cars taking up parking spaces, right? It's, you know, trying to convince more people to walk or bike or take the bus most of the time. And hey, if you need it, here's a car when you do.
Judith?
I, I think it's great to have car shares. I'm not sure that they should be tied to residential development investments, one to one. And, you know, at Sorrel Place, what was the per-unit cost there with all of the transportation benefits associated with it? It was around half a million dollars per unit, correct?
Do I have the information off the top of my head?
I, I, I think that providing opportunities for car share in the gateway is terrific. But I'm not sure it should be the residential developers who can be expected to do that. And that certainly, you know, wouldn't rank for me along with providing affordable housing.
Yeah, I would just say that this has been from the beginning of the discussions with the community about the gateway area plan, sort of one of the hallmarks of what we're trying to do in the area. What I'm hearing is that you, what I'm hearing is that some of you want to remove this as a community benefit entirely and some of you want to downgrade it. So what I would suggest is maybe you get to a point where you can recommend where it would fall in the spectrum of one, two, and three. So maybe a show of hands, one, two, or three, where you think it lands or leave your, yeah, zero if you want it to be zero.
Yeah, I'm confused by the question, though. I mean, you know, Judith is not saying that she's against the program and I totally agree. I just don't know that the developer is the best person to manage the program. We want car share. I don't, I haven't heard anybody here say they're, they don't want car share or like the idea. How should it be managed? That way or just a different way? You know, if we reworded that, maybe there'd be more support for it. Or less, you know? I don't know what the best model is.
Yeah. I mean, what I can tell you is that there aren't car shares out there that are interested in our community. You know, I've tried to reach out to Zipcar multiple times. When Zipcar comes in, we might want to, you know, remove this. But if, in the interim, if you want to say, we're not requiring one to two parking spaces per unit and we're incentivizing folks to move into this area and take advantage of an alternative transportation lifestyle, we all recognize that every once in a while, you're going to have to zip to Eureka. Every once in a while, you're going to want to zip to, you know, Strawberry Rock. And so making sure that folks can move into these buildings and still have the availability of a car, you know, based on a project-based car share program, which is, as far as I can tell, the only way we're going to get car shares in our community in, say, the next five, 10 years. That's why it's in there. If you remove that or, you know, you downgrade it, I mean, if it doesn't get built, we don't, we don't know even if it's the highest priority if it'll get built. That's, you know, there's no guarantee there for sure.
I'd suggest if you want it that, that badly, that the city make available a location for a car share franchise and give them a tax break for sufficient incentives so that they will want to come in here and at least give it a try. A car share, whether it's being operated by an apartment building owner or by a company who is really expert at doing this stuff, will have different types of results. And, and so I, I think car shares are great, but tying it to, you know, an investment incentive for, in effect, a builder is really not the way that we're going to get what we want in the long term.
I hear that. So we have a zero, a three, a two, a two, and a three. Okay, so I'm, I'm going to suggest that we, again, make this one yellow. Whoops. And come back to it. Do y'all feel comfortable moving it to two?
I'd love to see that on the list to go into our general plan policies as attract car share investors to Arcata through blah, blah, blah.
Okay, and then moving on to the last one on the list of threes, daylight and restore segments of Jolly Giant Creek. Again, there are only a couple of locations where this is even possible, but does that seem like a three to y'all? Okay. The rest of these, what I'd, what I'd suggest, I heard the vice chair say, you know, now you can promote things that you want to move up to the three category. If we can get through this list, that'll give everyone the opportunity to promote their, their ideas. Do you want to continue on or do you want to open it up for a free forum for folks to start recommending upvoting?
I would really like to hear from the commission if there's anything on your personal list that you can convince that should be a three. Pitch it briefly.
Publicly accessible open space, permanently dedicated to that use is definitely a three for me. Or a top priority. I don't know where you had it on that list there.
It's right here.
Okay, I, I think that should be one of our highest priorities. Special needs housing, I think, should be one of our highest priorities.
Can we, can we deal with them one at a time so I know where to move them? So on the open site?
I also have public open space as one of my top and I would love to see it a three.
As do I.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to mark them blue to make sure that, to indicate that we've dealt with them.
And special needs housing, we already dealt with, right?
I think that was on a different list.
What was the category?
Special needs housing.
Wasn't that on a different list?
It got moved to this list when we, when we went through the first list. It should be, yeah. So you want that to be a three, Judith?
I, I think so. I don't know what other people think.
I'd be in the two neighborhood one, that one.
I would also be in the two neighborhood.
Two?
Joel, any others?
Two is fine with me.
All right, who has anything else to pitch for a three? Anybody?
I had energy efficient buildings. Just because I'm an advocate of eliminating as much greenhouse gases as we can and energy efficiency, I think, is really important.
I have a question on that. Doesn't California Building Code already require a certain level of efficiency in buildings? So how much further? I think we would need to flush this out of like how much further they were going to go. Oh, is it in that one?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't write it down on mine.
Yeah, 15%. And I don't think that the original had a target. The original language had a target. I borrowed this from our existing resource conservation where we say that our projects are going to be 15% or more above Title 24. So I put 15% in here. I don't think the original one had 15%.
Yeah, so I'm definitely in favor of this. I think if it's a three, it should probably be more than 15%. Although I understand that the California Building Code has gotten quite a bit stricter about this recently. And so it's like a weird moving number to reach for.
It is, it is a moving target. And I think that, you know, this could be done through a combination of, you know, building enhancements and, you know, and solar and that sort of thing.
Judith, do you have any thing on that one?
That was actually on my list of things that I thought the general plan should address. I think that Arcata can be a leader in sustainable construction and that we could reward developers citywide for achieving those goals, not just within the gateway. I don't think that this is a location-linked policy and I'm not sure that the gateway area plan is the best tool to achieve it.
So this is a three for you?
No, it's, it's a, we should do it citywide and save our community benefits program priority items for other things.
Was anybody other than a two on this one? Okay.
I would like to make a pitch for land dedication just because in terms of community benefits, I, you know, if, if some trail gets an easement because of land dedication or something like that, that to me is a real big punch that we will all enjoy for the rest of Arcata.
Ditto.
This, this is, okay, yeah, so you're suggesting this be a three? Okay, you guys are kind of split on this one.
In terms of real cost to a developer, this is potentially significant. And in terms of leverage for opportunity for public areas, you know, enhanced watershed and all kinds of stuff.
We also, we still have the requirements for, you know, for easements in, in many of the areas that they have to provide publicly accessible open space. Just to throw that out there. Okay, were there others that folks wanted to make a pitch for changing before we go through the rest of the list? Are you comfortable with the rest of the list, I guess is the question?
I, I don't think we've actually gotten to review this whole list, right? Because we hadn't seen it before. So I think we should probably just keep going from, I guess, the first two where we sort of stopped.
Yeah. Okay.
Can we agree that we'll only stop or converse about one of these if we want to change it from its assignment?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. So I think this is where we're at rehabilitation, preservation of historic, potentially historic buildings. Okay, I'm going to move on until somebody says stop. Space designated intended for use as publicly available native arts and cultural space development, partnership with tribally organized nonprofits and/or local tribal governments.
Can I, can I ask a question? In, in the previous list, there were three items in that cultural category. Yeah. I'm, I'm wondering if it makes sense to combine the, to combine those and identify?
I think I did. I think, for example, public art and beautification fund are combined. Let's find that one.
And then there was that issue of for the, then, where, where was it? With the tribally organized nonprofits. Wasn't, wasn't that something that was also included in another gateway policy? I don't see how, I don't see how this necessarily links to the community benefits program per se for individual developments. It seemed that there were, there were other policies that would address this in terms of investment. I'm, I'm just not sure how it links to individual developments.
There's a policy and this is an implementation of that policy, I guess. Maybe, can we put a pin in that and then come back to it?
Can, can, can I just ask a question? So what the community benefits program is responding to is, is basically density and streamlined approval. So I'm, I'm just not sure how that relates to the density and the streamlined approval stuff.
It's one of the community benefits that was identified through the public process that folks felt like was a good trade-off for that ministerial approval process. So you're calling that in a question. Maybe you can ask your colleagues how they feel about it. And then we can take action on that based on where y'all land.
I'm fine with putting a pin on it and coming back to it. I feel like we're running short on time pretty rapidly here.
Okay, project that... Okay, project that provides more than 50 full-time equivalent jobs, so major employer. 10% above inclusionary zoning requirements is another one where I think that we need to rank and then come back to after we talked about inclusionary zoning. Greater than 50% of the units are for sale owner occupies. This does not have a affordability requirement. This is any market rate. On-site enclosed bike structure, parking and storage for residents, employees and/or for the general public in excess of 50% of the minimum required by the Gateway Code.
There's.
I would, I would keep that one as a two personally.
How the rest, are you filling?
I'm a two on that.
Can't have any halves, Joel.
A one.
Okay, you guys are split on this. I'm gonna suggest you come back to it. You don't have your full complement here. And, you know, we're not making a final decision anyway. We're trying to get, you know, whittled down. Showering locker facilities, people who bike and walk to work.
Definite one, if not zero.
Yeah, we've got two votes potentially for a zero. This one's, okay, wow, y'all are not for alternative transportation anymore, huh? Headline tomorrow, Planning Committee, Arcata Planning Commission, not for alternative transportation.
Does being for all alternative transportation require showers?
It's, it's long been a thing in like LEED certified buildings that you want to encourage people to have a comfortable way to commute on a bike.
Yeah, if you get there and you're sweaty and you can change your clothes.
The Epic Office has a shower in it, although I don't think anyone ever uses it.
There's the point.
Yeah, the question is, does it need to be in the building code in effect?
Yeah, not, Commissioner Yoda, what's, I don't think I caught here. Okay, so we have a mix of ones and zeros and a, and a two, a one, okay, ones and zeros. Oops. Okay, this one's coming off the list. Okay, establish and maintain a minimum of 30 years project-based electric bike share program.
That, that one's sort of like the car share program where I'm not sure it makes sense to link it to a developer's responsibility, but providing an opportunity for some other entity to come in and operate, that might make more sense. And I think that's something that should be a citywide program, not a gateway program. And I'd love to see policies about that in our general plan.
Anyone else a zero on this one?
I'm close to a zero because, I mean, we do have a bike share program citywide right now. I don't know that a developer should run a new one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm much less of a defender of this one than the car share because, you know, we're already gonna require a ton of bike parking and bikes are cheaper than cars and take up less space and yada, yada.
This one, you don't get a choice on, I'm, I'm sorry. This, this is something that we committed to in our SALT grant that we would have a pathway for conservation easement contributions in an INLU fund. So I'm not gonna let you zero this out. I'm gonna pull my trump card on this one, but please do tell us if two is the appropriate ranking for this. Okay, let's see, Public Art INLU Fund. You had some heartburn over this before. I put it as a one.
I, I think that was one of the things that I was wondering about combining with those other items.
Yeah, I thought I'd combine it, but you're right, it's right here. See if we can find the other one. Maybe we'll combine them. Here's the ground floor, street facing space. You, you discussed that already. Does one seem appropriate? Okay, this falls into the category of some of these others in the one category that, yes, they're gonna have to do it anyway. The pitch for this is that it provides them some incentive to do it. It's the lowest priority, but they'd have to remediate toxic contamination. You're gonna go three on that? Two? Any other? Twos? One, 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 okay, one. Rapid housing production. I know you had some concerns about this before, but, you know, it's kind of a way to, you know, incentivize people being in first. Ones seem appropriate? Okay. Mix of unit sizes, this one is, again, it's maybe providing an incentive for what the market's already gonna do, but it's on the list. I gave it a one. Three?
Can you tell why you think it should be a three briefly?
And, and in my thinking, this would be for large projects with maybe a threshold of, you know, 90 units or something like that. It, it would create a, among other things, mixed population, potentially mixed income form of development. It's an anti-gentrification measure. And I think that if what we're seeking is a vibrant, diverse neighborhood, that this is one way of providing it. And in a large project, it's something that a developer could find lucrative as well. And I, I guess I would, I would say, you know, to establish that, we would probably have to have some sort of a, of a threshold for when that would kick in. Yeah, you know, for, I, I suspect that, you know, for a 12-unit building, that might be more difficult than for a development with 90-plus units potentially in more than one building. And.
Yeah, I'm in, I support having units of different mixed size. I, I'm reluctant to put this above a one just because I think the developers need to respond to the, developers need to respond to the market. So I think one is an appropriate ranking.
More than 40% units include universal design, design for mobility or sensory impaired.
Did that not get included under the other, you know, the one that was special needs housing?
This special needs housing, I believe, is 100%. Let's see. Thank you. It's right there. I guess it's not explicit. I, I interpret this to be 100% of the units.
They're in the next column.
The six points was 100%.
Forget this, this is way too complex. I mean, projects are gonna come in, they're gonna be purpose-built or they're gonna not be purpose-built. And so, you know, if you have a senior housing complex, you have someone who's doing senior housing. And they're not, you know, so I, I just think that, you know, this, again, to simplify it, I would make it so that, you know, look, if you're coming in with a purpose-built housing, you know, oh, you're gonna do, 50% is gonna be for homeless persons. I mean, I, I, I think so. I mean, unless the commission wants to, you know, create some, and maybe what we do is we go through this first reductive stage and then you create more additional nuance if you want to later. But I just, I think it's a little bit, I, I, I think it's a little bit wishful thinking that you're gonna have 25, 50, or 75% of a project purpose-built and then the remainder built for some other, you know, use or any use.
I think we all agree.
And, and again, you know, we can come back and modify it if that's not the case. People come in and say, hey, I want to do 50% senior housing, then we'll bring it back. So special needs housing, 100%.
Yeah, so then I guess my question is, back up to number 25 on that list, are we also including a 40% benefit?
There we go. I'm sorry, I missed what you said, Commissioner.
So if you, if we jump back up to, it's number 25 on that list, 40% of units include, right, like, isn't the same thing you were just saying about it's sort of all or nothing a little bit, or?
This, this is one area where you may have, because there's requirements for ADA in the building code and some of these adaptable designs. So this basically would say going above the ADA requirements, the, and the building code requirements for adaptability and building in, you know, some proportion of the units so that they're universal design. So I think that is one area where you could get a mix of, of special needs types. Okay. Publicly accessible vehicle charging, you know, whatever minimum requirements of code.
I, I like this one a lot. I, I would push this up to a two if it was me, but I don't know.
Any other takers for two? Two, we got four twos, Judith?
I think the market's gonna provide for that. I, I, I think the market's gonna be way ahead of minimum requirements. And anyone who is providing any parking is probably gonna want to provide electric charging along with it, with that level of investment per vehicle. So I, I think it's a great idea. I'd put it at, at a one. And I'm not sure that we need to incentivize it at all.
Okay. I'm gonna put it at two since we have four votes for two. And again, I think we're gonna have a process where we come back again and look at these. Enhanced native landscaping. I would almost take this off. That's already gonna be required. But.
I'm fine with that if it's already required.
Okay. Special needs housing, 100%, we already talked about. Where do you want to land? The technology to limit wastewater discharge. The Dune Building. Two, two? Two? One? Dan, you're the tiebreaker?
I, yeah, I'll go two.
Okay. Two, and pay into City Transportation Fund. For, fee must be used for bike. Let me read the rest of this. Oops, sorry. Bike lane and trail enhancement and associated public spaces. Seeing a two, one, two, two. Judith, you're the tiebreaker? Or maybe the kingpin, one? So we have split vote on that. I'll put two slash one here and we'll come back to that one. Does that sound okay? Oops. Okay. Okay, so it's 8:14. I do want to touch base a little bit on at least one of the other topics, if you'll allow it.
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay, and I, I think I will take this discussion and try and put together a little bit more, you know, form, formulated proposal for how we can, you know, bring these together. I appreciate the work that you did, helping to rank these and, and to simplify it. I know that it's been a lot of hard work. And then when we have the full commission complement, we'll talk about it again. Sound good? Okay. So we'll, we'll do a little choose your own adventure at this point. We can either jump into inclusionary zoning, which, you know, I'll warn you, is probably pretty dense. Commercial mixed-use designations, which is probably a little more simple. And then the additional cleanup items, which, you know, you've had, had some time to be able to look at these. I don't have much to say except that we support these changes to the RC policies at the staff level. These came from Environmental Services.
Well, I'm sure at this time, we cannot tackle the inclusionary zoning. I think we would all agree on that.
Okay. Maybe I can present real quickly on what we've done with commercial mixed-use designations. And I apologize for the formatting. Again, this is, we don't have control over this. It doesn't look like this on the backend, but it prints out this way. So the formatting makes it a little hard to follow in terms of what's important. But in terms of the commercial mixed-use designations, you recall from your last meeting that there were some properties on the north end of Giantoli. There was property on LK Wood and maybe a couple of properties south of Samoa. I think there was some concern that Commissioner Mayer had raised about the south of Samoa properties being in the coastal zone and having those be mixed use and whether the availability for residential development on those, which I think is a, you know, really good point, that we need to take into more consideration. And perhaps that can be addressed through a little overlay, the coastal overlay zone. I didn't go into detail on that in this. I just addressed the broad brush stroke. So I, I want to say that, you know, the recommendation here does not fully address that. And I do think we need to come back and talk about the, the local coastal program portion of that. What we did do here, though, was to try and identify some combining of the commercial mixed-use policy and the policy associated with commercial in general that we would lose out on entirely. And so we've got a couple of policies updated, LU3A and LU3D that try and address those, the loss of some of those uses that we would have in commercial in general by eliminating it. And so I think those, those ones are simple, I hope, in terms of recommendation for, for adoption. And then in packet page 22, there's also a table in the land use element that identifies the allowable uses within commercial central, commercial general, commercial mixed. And so we're showing a revised table where we've eliminated the commercial general and where we've moved those primarily into commercial mixed. And, and then I've gone one step further. We don't typically do this and I wouldn't propose that this be in the ultimate version of the land use element. But just identifying that some of these uses, we would want to have permitting processes around some use permit. And so, for example, on the commercial general column, if you look on sales and goods and services, there were already in commercial central and commercial mixed use, the top five uses were, or six uses were all, no, I'm sorry, five uses were already included in those other categories, so we're just eliminating them. But for the ones that didn't have a corresponding, you know, category in commercial general, commercial mixed use, such as wholesale trade and warehousing, what the proposal is here is to move wholesale trade and warehousing into the commercial central to allow that there and then to also allow it in commercial mixed where it wasn't previously. And so you can see this list contains those underlined Xs being allowable uses within those areas. If you go down to the very bottom of that category, travel trailer, RV park, we'd propose to allow that in the commercial mixed use, but with a use permit. And so it wouldn't be allowed principally permitted everywhere in commercial mixed use, but you would have to come in and ask the city, is this an appropriate location for a RV park? With the changes that you made, the Mad River RV Park in the north side of town is going to be in a commercial mixed use area. And so it's just in recognition that there are some areas that would be suitable for RV park in commercial mixed use. So that's how the table is structured. I'm gonna leave it at that. If you have specific questions about the particular use types or want to have a discussion about where they were moved into which category and whether they should not be. I also want to point out that we did receive, and I'm sure you all read, email from Colin Fisk commenting on some of these. One of the things that he said specifically was related to gas stations. Why are we allowing new gas stations? I think that's a salient point the commission should consider if we eliminate the ability to create new gas stations and just recognize. to create new gas stations, and just recognize that the existing ones is non-conforming.
Oops, sorry, Judith.
I, I have some comments on both of those sections, since we're talking about the chart on packet page 22. For moving the high-impact retail commercial uses and wholesale trade and warehousing into commercial mixed use, and then keeping the transient lodging there, I believe that all three of those categories could move into commercial mixed, but only with a use permit. I feel really strongly about the wholesale trade and warehousing in particular, given the amount of traffic that it can generate, and the fact that in those mixed areas, it's conceivable that we could also have residential uses. And, a little less strongly about the high-impact retail commercial uses, both, both of those things will have impacts, and I believe that the city should retain more discretion over what types of wholesaling and high-impact uses can be allowed in a mixed-use area. So I, I would support moving those in there, but only with a use permit.
Yeah, others, Matt?
I think that makes sense to me, too.
Agreed.
Sorry, for, a point of clarification, so use permit in commercial mixed, and then we did move the wholesale trade and warehousing into commercial central, kind of want to pose the question is, you know, do you think that's advisable, and if so, use permit in, in central commercial as well, question mark?
Okay, so, for the, the wholesale trade and warehousing, the, I, I think it would be important to separate wholesale trade and warehousing in terms of what would need a use permit, but in commercial central, I think warehousing should have a, a use permit, given the amount of traffic that it can generate, and the impacts to adjacent uses, and the fact that, you know, warehousing beads is really different than, you know, warehousing larger items, so.
How do you see this coming up? The wholesale trade and warehousing in the commercial central, is that, is there space? Is it viable?
You know, I, I think there are some categories of uses that might fall into that, that, you know, could fall into commercial central, we're pretty built out in the commercial central, so they would be, you know, smaller scale, too, because of the units, or the parcel sizes are smaller. But I think it's, sounds like unless there's anyone who's like, no, let's remove that entirely from commercial central, just indicating and, and understanding use permits in the codes would be required whenever that would, would happen, so, you know, we'd have, you know, that, that ability to say, yes, it's appropriate in this area, or no, it's not.
And there was another commercial mixed-use designation thing, well, two more, one question and one change. In LU3D, the Valley West Opportunity Area, your, your draft says existing lodging land uses that serve travelers and tourists may expand their services and operations without discretionary approvals. No. Absolutely not. I, I think that in, in, in those cases, this is an area where the city needs to retain some discretion, and I would think that Valley West residents in particular would appreciate city discretion on potentially vastly expanding motel operations on existing sites. So I, I would say that they may expand their services and operations based on an application to do so to the planning commission. I want this commission to retain discretion over that.
I had also flagged that, that issue. I would be okay with limiting an expansion up to, you know, some minor, you know, degree, or that we don't have to hear it if they're gonna add two rooms, five rooms, you know, I don't know how we, we deal with that, but I, I do agree that any kind of significant or material expansion should require discretionary approval, but maybe there's a way to, to allow some expansion without that approval.
Matt, anybody? No? Can I just, for a point of clarity, did you get enough information on that last topic that Judy brought up?
I put a, I put a question mark around in the central commercial wholesale trade and warehousing, because I don't think I heard from all the commissioners.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we weren't done with that. I, I think a use permit for both central, commercial, and central mixed makes sense for the warehousing.
And I agree with that, too.
Okay.
Okay, and, and I had a question, too, which was on LU3A, commercial mixed use, right above that. Residential densities allow up to 50 units per acre, which, with density bonuses, could then conceivably increase to 90? Would that be on top of all of the other potential non-residential uses on a site? It, it, I, I wish this were phrased so that we had some more specificity on what happens if you have residential and non-residential uses, where the non-residential uses can themselves be fairly substantial, and I, I guess they get limited by, you know, floor area ratio or, or, or elevation, you know, building heights and stuff like that, but that's really unclear to me, what that 50 units per acre actually means in a commercial mixed-use site where other things are going on, too.
Okay, so we have two questions on the table. The first that was raised was related to whether or not expansion of hotel operations on site of existing hotels should require a use permit. And then the second is what the relationship between density and commercial mixed use and density bonus is. So how does, I, I think you were just starting the last discussion.
Yeah, let's, let's finish the, the previous discussion. Is there a staff input on that?
I mean, we put this in here because, you know, sites that are, you know, have hotels, most of the sites in Valley West do have large open areas, we've already had one hotelier reach out and ask to expand. They're, you know, currently in our code, it's principally permitted activity. You know, we're looking to, you know, have a little more control, I think, in, in these mixed-use areas in terms of, you know, non, or, or uses that would typically, at least in our market, prohibit development of housing, you know, but also recognizing that folks that buy a hotel and see a big open area, you know, are, are sometimes looking to expand. So, but, you know, again, a use permit is not the, you know, the most onerous thing for, you know, a developer to go through. I know that any hoop you ask them to jump through is, is, you know, is a hoop for them, but, you know, it's, it's reasonable control that the city should retain for, you know, for these not, for commercial uses. So, I'm open to, to it either way, we made this proposal based on a known hotelier that wants to do an expansion of a, of a hotel.
Okay, and what is your thought about, as Joel suggested, perhaps, if they're just adding a, you know, small portion, is there a percentage thing that we can?
Yeah, easily.
25%?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, most, most hotels are not going to add one, two, three, or, you know, four units at a time, generally speaking, although, you know, we do have a proposal to, for the Hampton Inn to expand what was once a, you know, kind of a communal space into, you know, two new units, so. I think if you're, you know, doing an internal expansion, it wouldn't trigger it, if you're building a new building, it would trigger it, is probably the way we'd, we'd ultimately break it down.
Okay, commission, sound, does that sound good?
Okay.
All right, next question.
In terms of the... Sorry, let me just take a note. In terms of the, how the density bonus relates to, you know, standards, I mean, it, I'm gonna start to sound like a broken record here, and I apologize, but yes, you are, when you trigger the density bonus, the, the developer can select incentives and concessions from our code, up to and including, you know, floor area ratios, building heights, excuse me, massing. So, those, those are, there is the risk that you'd have much higher density.
And I think there was a second part of Judith's question, that was, in a mixed-use building, right, if the ground floor is commercial, does that impact the residential density at all for either our code or the density bonus law?
I'm sorry, can you ask that again?
So, so, in a, in a mixed-use building where the ground floor is going to be commercial, does that impact the density requirements at all for residential, like, above it, right? I think that was your question, if I interpreted it correctly.
Yeah, and I wasn't, I wasn't even really thinking, just in terms of one building, I was thinking of a, a multi-structure kind of development. So...
Yeah, so, so if you have a mixed-use building, they would be subject to all the standards that we have in our code, building up to the, the density limits that we set. If they triggered the density bonus, then they could start to ask for concessions, so that's where, you know, they'd maybe be able to go over the height limits in order to, you know, build out the number of units that they wish to build out. So it's, it's the same relationship for full residential project or a mixed-use project.
So, like the broken record, this is state law that we don't have any control over?
Correct, yeah, it's, if the developers trigger it, then we, you know, we basically have to fall in line with the, the state law.
So is that question answered?
I mean, you know, I, I think the idea here is, you know, that we want to try and identify the, the, you know, densities in these areas that, you know, we want to see, now, if you have many different, you know, property types, big ones and small ones, here you're gonna have the potential for a whole range of different types of development, but without parsing out based on, you know, parcel size, you're gonna end up with, you know, potentially ridiculous solutions if you make the density too low, so that if you have small sites that are zone mixed use, and, you know, you limit the density to, you know, say 15, then you're only going to be able to develop, you know, maybe one or two units on those sites. And so what we've done is we've taken a look at some of these smaller sites where we know developers want to build, like, you know, six to 10 units, but they can't under the current density allowances. Raising it to 50 allows them to build those six or 10 units on a small site, say in the North Town. You get a completely different solution set if you're looking at the Valley West Shopping Center, for example, where theoretically with 50 units per acre, you could have hundreds of units, and, you know, if you were to density bonus that, you know, certainly you have a, a lot more, but I think that, you know, the, you know, 50-unit scenario is going to, you know, generate housing on small parcels that would never take advantage of the density bonus law to begin with, and that's, that's where we're going to get the majority of the, the gains in housing in these smaller sites that are closer to the university and the downtown.
I, I, I'm just envisioning different kinds of projects that could come and surprise us. So, not necessarily on a small site, but on some of our medium sites, like the one on 11th Street that came up a few weeks ago, where conceivably you've got a mixed-use project, where the developer decides this is the right time to develop half of a parcel, and we don't have a clue what's going to happen on the other half. Is, is there... Given that this 50 units per acre could become 90 units plus commercial development, and it might not all be in one building, is there any way that we could link this to a planned development requirement on sites where we really need to know what's going on with the whole parcel?
I, you know, I'd leave that to the commission to, to debate. When folks come in with a phased project, they typically have not invested the design, time, energy, and money into the entire site, and so you might see a thumbnail sketch of what's happening on the rest of the site for someone who's really planning forward, or you might just see somebody who knows that, you know, I can do this project now, I don't even know if I can do a second phase, but I know I can develop this piece, and so that's all you're gonna see. I think mixing the, I, I think it confuses the issue a little bit to reference the project that you looked at recently in the Greenview Market area, because there are no standards. That project is developed out to the total standard, so to ask that developer to propose something would be pure speculation. And so, you know, certainly you can ask for, you know, planned developments, my experience of, of planned developments that we've, you know, got on the books to date, is that, you know, they need some modification. The planned development does not necessarily provide you the, you know, the authority to then peer into subsequent phases, you know, certainly you could, you know, you could ask for that. I think it's complicating the development process by doing that, and I think the stage we're in is, is one of trying to streamline and simplify project approval processes, not, not complicate them, so staff recommendation would be not to take that action, but, you know, we could certainly look at it on a, you know, parcel-by-parcel, case-by-case basis.
I don't see anything in here that really allows you to do that, given how the policy is stated. It, it doesn't seem to encourage that particularly.
No, the, the suggestion you made of a planned development, for example, would be in a, another body of policy, where you might say, you know, whereas right now it says any residentially zoned parcel over an acre, excuse me, requires a planned development, you might say any project that proposes residential development that is over, and then set your threshold, requires a planned development. Again, I don't think that's the best course of action for getting projects done, but, you know, but it would, it would certainly provide, you know, more detail upfront to decision-makers.
I would certainly recommend that.
It feels like we're needing to revisit this, or, you know, are, are you done with what you need from us on this segment of the meeting, because we still have public comment?
Yeah, I, I think I've got some, some comments back, there's maybe some open-endedness to this, but if there are any other recommendations around the commercial mixed-use designations or the table, I think we're, we're gonna move forward with that as a recommendation.
Okay, and Commissioner Mayor, I'm sure if you would like to, you can bring this back to our attention at another time, if you feel like there's something here. All right, so closing that, we will move on to public comment.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. First, a small item on the inclusionary zoning, let me get to that. In the packet, there's, the community development director put a market rate chart for rents and a statement, "The moderate income rent limits for various household sizes are lower than market rate in Arcata." I strongly disagree. It shows market, shows moderate income rents as 1760 for a studio, 1886 for a one-bedroom, et cetera. That's not market rate yet. As an aside, the City of Santa Cruz is taking building heights and inclusionary zoning and putting on the ballot via voter initiative. In terms of the community benefits, I'm going to apologize in advance if I sound harsh, but I have to say a lot, and I have to say it quickly. You spent four sessions on this, and with all real respect, I think you're mired in the details. Need to look at a larger overall picture of what's the goal here. The comments from the September 25th Open House meeting are typed out in Arcata One. They're listed in the staff report for the study session, and it's, it may be worth looking at them to see what other people wanted to see as community benefits, overwhelmingly for owner-occupied, affordable units, microgrid is on there in the top five, you know. So again, just look at it. The purpose of the community benefit program, as I saw it, was to provide a streamlined approval, taller buildings and higher density for the developers. We've since learned that this is, they can accomplish this through the state density bonus law. So the question becomes, what is going to make it more attractive to them? I think it was Commissioner Yodowitz who mentioned, "Have some developers come in and talk." The, I'll mention that the list that we saw here was changed from the list that you had worked on. Some things were added and changed. The, what was removed, in my opinion, were not necessarily appropriate. But the, again, skipping around a bit, I was going to propose that rather than contracting from one to three, that it be expanded from one to 100, and then everything up from there, to give you more idea of where you really stand on things. Some things, such as owner-occupied housing, now has two points. That's on the same level as electric charging stations. That doesn't make sense to me at all. And so, I'm not saying that everything that everyone said is bad. Don't misread me. The community development director said, "Some of these things are in a category all their own. They should be given, like, if it's a scale of one to 100, they should be given 60 points or something." The, so what I'm, I'm going to do it myself, and I'm going to offer as a suggestion, is kind of start fresh and take the old list and rank them from one to 100, and see where you, how you feel about some of these things. But the overall picture is saying, we want to look at what we want, what we want the developers to do, and look at what the developers want. What would make a, what we call a win-win solution? And sometimes I look at these things and I think of, how is a developer going to game the system? You know, how is he going to take advantage of things that are low-cost to him or her? And the, you want to avoid that, obviously, and get what you want. So the one thing that I came up with, and there are other things, is to say, what's going to be an advantage to the developer? What are they going to want? And this is where my opinion comes into play, and that's on parking. I'm fully in favor of having a minimum of zero, but the maximum now is one quarter parking per unit in the corridor and hub, and one per 1,000 square feet for commercial. Offer parking to the developers in exchange for community benefits, up to a certain level. I think, I think that you have collectively kind of shooting yourself in the foot with the parking situation, and developers are not going to choose the gateway code at all and are going to go for the state density bonus. Am I on my second minute? Okay. There's a quote, "It's starting to appear that the program will have little leverage in the face of state-mandated density bonus and streamlining rules." That was Commissioner Mayor who said that. So I've got more notes, there's lots of answers, but again, I urge you to look at, what's going to get it done? What's your goal? Your goal is to have developers offer amenities to the community. How's that going to work? Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. Go ahead, Colin.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP. I submitted some written comments yesterday, and so I hope that you had time to review those. I think some of those issues will, it sounds like, remain live for future discussions, but because there was so much discussion about it this evening, I just wanted to emphasize that when it comes to transportation, the incentives and options that are available at a person's place of residence really do play a big role in determining what modes of transportation people use. And also, the choice of a person or the incentive of a person to not own a vehicle or to not store a vehicle at their residence makes a huge difference in terms of determining their likelihood of using other modes of transportation. So I think, you know, combining the incentives when it comes to the parking regulations with other alternative modes of transportation, such as the car share and the bike share, and having those really be tied to the residential developments, I think makes a lot of sense and is very important. I also want to just highlight again the issue that Director Lawyer raised around, this is an opportunity to prohibit the development of new gas stations. I think that should be a no-brainer at this point. In a decade or two, we'll be looking to try to remediate and redevelop gas stations, and certainly can see no reason to build more. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Go ahead, JB.
Hello, to staff and to Commissioners. Yeah, I just had a quick comment. Long night for you guys, so I appreciate all your work. That's not it, but it is one of the things. It's mostly in relation to the additional cleanups, and the staff recommends incorporating following changes into the recommendation as far as RC2B, environmental buffers, and then also RC3A requirement for wetlands and delineation studies. And mainly, my concern is, because it sounds like in the land use code, it does specify that there will be the buffers at 50 feet for developed and undeveloped for 100 feet. My concern, though, is actually what will be the protocols for wetlands reconnaissance and what would trigger wetland delineation? And will those be the three characteristics that indicate vegetation, soil, and hydrology? And will any one of those actually delineate a wetland? And that's my main comment on that, because I know these are going to be more in, like, master plans, and I'm just wondering if anything changes in terms of those. And that's it. Thank you. Appreciate all your work.
We have no more commenters online.
Okay, thank you. We will close the public comment portion and move on to commission and staff deliberations.
Do folks want to take action on the banning gas stations? Just if folks are interested while we're here?
Well, I'm all for it. I don't know what that would look like in terms of protocol and sequence.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I think I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I got general agreement on that, and so I made a notation in here, and so that'll come back as part of your expanded recommendations to planning, city council, or other.
Okay, thank you. Staff deliberations, I mean, communications, correspondence?
I guess the only correspondence that is jumping out at me right now is to remind the commission that we'll have a joint study session with the city council coming up on the 24th, your next regularly scheduled meeting, which is canceled in lieu of the joint study session.
And that'll be here at 6:00. And we'll be missing Simmons and Lehman.
Here at 6:00, that's correct.
Oh, good place to be.
And the topics for that will be the general plan, will be covering the balance of the general plan.
Okay. Any commission communications? All right, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.